The fourteenth meeting of the twenty-third council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. Councilor Benton will be running a few minutes late. And at this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilor Jones. Thank you, Councilor Jones. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break this evening at approximately 7:00 p.m. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. At this time, we were going to -- there's no proclamations or presentations this evening. There is a presentation from Jerry Romero, or Gerald Romero, from the Budget Office regarding the latest GRT. Mr. Romero, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Give me one sec here. Mr. President, members of the council, the city received our GRT distribution on June the fourteenth, just a few days back. This is April activity that we accrue for the month of May. We had a fairly strong month. We had a year-over-year growth for the month of May of 5.5%. That brings the cumulative growth for eleven months of the fiscal year to 2.0%. So, we're actually trending above the 1.7% that we had revised, so this is good. Three-tenths of a percent higher. Every tenth of a percent, essentially 300,000. So, we're hopeful this holds for the remaining month of the year. If you look at the handout I just gave you, the cumulative change in some of the relevant sectors, this would be the year-to-date growth rate. So, accommodations and food services was fairly strong at 4.2%. Construction, once again, for the month was up 10.5%, but almost 20% cumulative growth for the year. And that represents like 8.8% of all the grocery receipts distribution we get. So, construction's very strong. Obviously, construction can be very volatile, so we take that, you know, watch that closely. Food, from the hold harmless, down 5.9% cumulatively, right about where we thought it should be. Because as you recall, that phase-out for food, hold harmless, should be about 6% a year. So, we've had some real odd things going on with the hold harmless distribution for food. It looks like that's finally settling. And overall, the growth without any food or medical hold harmless is actually around 3.8%. So, the growth but for the, you know, reductions the state's making is fairly strong, almost 4%.
Are there any questions for Mr. Romero? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no economic development discussions this evening. That is item four. We are now under item five, administration question and answer period. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, Mr. Nair, I want to follow up. At our last meeting, we were discussing APD's response to the young seven-year-old woman, and we got into the, some of the reforms that APD is initiating under the administration dealing with child abuse. But it also gave us an opportunity to ask about the status of implementing the 2014 child abuse report that was done in the wake of Omari Varela's case. And you were going to give us a quick update on the APD's progress in implementing those reforms and what the new administration is doing there. Could you give us a really quick synopsis of where we are? It's been four years, I know, and some things got set aside. I think we're glad to hear that things are back on track.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, pleased to do that. So, the previous administration created a child abuse prevention task force back in 2014, as you mentioned. It was very well-intentioned. Unfortunately, there was very little follow-through to ensure that APD was doing everything possible to protect children from abuse and neglect. So, some examples, the department was supposed to hire a social worker to assist the Crimes Against Children Unit, CACU. Instead, it hired a liaison, which was great, but not a social worker who we all know has a specific skillset. APD was to provide ongoing supervisory and leadership training. That wasn't fully implemented. There was supposed to be training throughout the department on forensic interviewing and techniques and the investigation process as a whole. That didn't happen. The task force noted that the Crimes Against Children Unit was understaffed with caseloads of 25 per detective, and they recommended a more manageable caseload. Now, the unit actually has fewer detectives, and an average of 50 cases per detective. And there were some other concepts around co-locating with CACU, some of the CYFD personnel. You know, there were a lot of great ideas in there. In addition, there was a recommendation to change APD's dispatch system, to add child abuse codes. That wasn't done at the time. So, last week, we made a list of a announcement of a list of policies that we've already been able to put into place to address some of these things. We changed the policies around collecting evidence at crimes against children sites where there are complaints of abuse or neglect. We changed some of the policies around the procedure to call in and get that information from the CYFD portal that we've all heard a lot about in the context of the Stewart case. And we're going to continue to work through these recommendations, including through our recruitment strategy, to add more police officers to make sure that we are staffing up crimes against children and child exploitation units.
Thank you very much. I know that's a lot, and it was from 2014. In the wake of that, we thought we were going to get a whole bunch of new things that may have gotten us to a place where officers had more information and could respond better. It's frustrating to hear that four years later, we know APD's challenges, but that the things we identified that we knew may have contributed to our inability to respond in our best way possible for a kid that needed help. It seemed like some of those metrics are in the wrong direction. So, I appreciate that this administration's taking that on. And maybe perhaps you could help us and ask, and I see Chief Guyer back here and the new chief of staff as well. Perhaps we could say in maybe 45, 60 days, let's get a report back to our office or through our office, and we'll share that back and have some transparency in this process about how APD is moving forward and what you need from the council to be sure that we're doing it right.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Councilor Davis. Are there any other questions for the administration? Councilor Borrego.
Thank you for that report, Sarita. Also, regarding the interaction technologically between children, youth, and families and the city, I understood that there were going to be some changes made, and I just wondered about that. Have we followed through on that? And I know funding is always an issue, but...
Ms. Nair.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Borrego, yes. So, the Real-Time Crime Center issued a directive, I believe it was last year, instructing its personnel to access the CYFD portal, which is where you can find the history of complaints against an individual or related to a specific child. Unfortunately, that directive did not go out to all the field officers so that they would know that if they were in an interaction where child abuse and neglect was alleged, they should call into the Real-Time Crime Center. We were able to close that loop, and Chief Guyer issued a special order that went to all personnel to instruct them to contact the RTCC, who could in turn access the portal.
I had another question, but it's on a different issue.
Good, we'll go and proceed.
Thank you. And the, I guess, Chief Dow, are you in? I had a question regarding fireworks. And while he comes down here, I think that, you know, as a city, we're all very concerned about the abuse and neglect for children, and I think that it sounds like you all are making some strides, so I appreciate that very much. I hope the next administration from the governor's office will push that a lot harder. Chief Dow, thank you for being here this evening. I had several questions from some of my constituents regarding fireworks being banned in the city limits. And I know that the county had something on their agenda last week, and I called you regarding that. And I appreciate that you sent me a memo, and I think the other councilors might have received it as well, regarding what the city can do to ban illegal fireworks. So, could you maybe go into kind of a summary of this for the public so that everyone understands what those restrictions are, please?
President Sanchez, Councilor Borrego, absolutely. So, obviously, to start out, the rain was wonderful that we had on Saturday, but unfortunately, the light fuels that we have in the Bosque in the open space, they're already dried out, so the fire danger is still present within the city of Albuquerque. Just to kind of cover some of the information with this document, we don't want to close the Bosque because we do appreciate the eyes and ears that we do have in the Bosque. And there are people down there that can identify suspicious activity, they can let us know if there's any fires, and that's something that we want to continue to have. We're also make sure that the public understands what are permissible and what are illegal fireworks. Anything that's over 10 feet high, over a six-foot circle, and louder than a cap gun is going to be an illegal firework. And the best way for the public to identify that is to look on the firework itself, and you'll see it's either a warning or caution. If it says "warning," that is an illegal firework. And if it says "caution," that means it's an illegal firework that you can utilize within the city of Albuquerque. There is some confusion with what Burnley County has and what we have. We already have a fireworks restriction in the city of Albuquerque all the time. No illegal fireworks at all. That means nothing 10 feet, high than 10 feet, six-foot circle, louder than a cap gun. And then the county went ahead and also talked about some of the changes they made, and basically they asked that people would just use it on asphalt or barren surfaces, any illegal fireworks. So, that's some of the differences there. As far as reporting illegal fireworks, we want the public to understand that we'd like to use the 311 app. We do not want the public to call 911 if there's illegal fireworks. We're asking that they download the 311 app on their smartphone. They can get it from the Apple Store, the different smartphone apps as well. And July 1st to the 7th, we're going to utilize the 311 system. And we've worked with DTI as well, and they're working on a mapping system, a GIS mapping system for us. When you log into the 311 app and report illegal fireworks, it'll set up a mapping system for us. That goes to our alarm room. Our alarm room supervisor will then look at that mapping system and identify where there's a high level of activity, anytime between July 1st and the 7th, and then we can dispatch units accordingly. So, the night of July 4th, obviously, we have a significant amount of illegal firework activity. So, I worked with Chief Guyer, and I want to thank him for his professionalism. He actually offered up six of his officers to work with my members of the Fire Marshal's Office on the night of the 4th. So, what we're going to do is, at 1,800 hours, we'll have six APD officers and six Fire Marshal, members of the Fire Marshal's Office, team up, and they will patrol area commands. They will be dispatched by our Fire Marshal, who will be in the alarm room, and they will send them out to illegal fireworks that night. And they will also inspect firework stands, they will issue citations, and they will confiscate illegal fireworks as well. So, that's our response on the night of the 4th. Fire restrictions, we have three stages. Stage one is always in effect for open space and the Bosque, which means no open flames, no smoking, no fireworks, obviously, and then no motorized vehicles on designated roadways in the Bosque. And then we get into stage two and stage three, which we're not looking at closing off the Bosque, which is all the way down to stage three. I can also talk to you about the open space patrols that we have. Right now, we're in Level One patrols. We started that May 26th. Now, Level One patrols means that we take a brush truck, and that is in service from 12:00 until 7:30. And that truck is designated to just patrol the Bosque and the open space. If there's any kind of small fire, they can make sure they aggressively attack that and keep it while it's small. Level two is dictated by the Deputy Chief of Operations, and he can actually have a second brush truck patrol during that time. We have four wildland specialty stations. We have one downtown, one on Rio Grande, Candelaria area, one in the Heights, which is off of Montgomery and Wantaboe, and then one off of Coors and Sequoia. And then, thank you, Councilor Borrego, that brush truck that you helped us purchase for Station 22, which will be here in November as well. The night of the 4th, we will have three brush trucks that are type sixes and one that's a type three. That's our largest brush truck, and they will be patrolling the city. Those will be on overtime, and they'll be in the Bosque, they will be in the foothills, they'll be at the West Mesa as well. We do see a significant number of fires on the 4th of July. In fact, last year, we had anywhere between 75 and 100 fires on that day. They were small outside fires, a few structured fires, and many of those caused by illegal fireworks as well. We also have units from the Fire Marshal's Office that are dedicated for Freedom Fourth and the Icetopes as well. So, I believe that we have a very solid plan developed by my deputy chiefs, and we're going to aggressively make sure that we're prepared to attack any small fires to make sure they don't get larger.
Thank you, Chief Dow. That was very informative and actually answered most of my questions. So, how can we help get the word out? How can the public help get the word out? Can we maybe post this on our city council webpage, the letter?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We can post that on there. We're also working with a couple of local TV stations, and we're going to have our PIO and our operations chief attend one of the morning news station shows. We have a press release going out tomorrow. Mayor Keller and I are actually going to tour the Bosque on Monday, and that'll be a press conference. We've also tried to be very aggressive in our own social media to make sure that the public understands. I would just like to let all the councilors know, and everybody even in the audience too, the best thing we can do is understand it's a shared responsibility as far as illegal fireworks. If you see your neighbor utilizing them, just a conversation with them is appropriate, friends, family, things like that. But it's all of our responsibility to make sure that we don't use illegal fireworks, especially with the dry conditions that we have.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Zimont.
Mr. President, councilors, Councilor Borrego, on your question of how can the council help, we can certainly have our social media people tweet this out and link to the documents on the chief's page. We can also have the Office of Neighborhood Coordination put it in their monthly newsletter as well as their weekly e-news items, and then when they go out to the neighborhoods, talk about this along with the councilors.
And in light of the Yute Fire and the Durango Fire, and we've seen what kind of damage it can do, I think a lot of other fires that are around us, I mean, I think it's imperative that we all work together as a community to ensure that, you know, these, this protocol is followed. Thank you. I appreciate it, Chief.
Chief, and I have one comment. I just want to personally congratulate you and your Academy Fire Team with the graduating class of 32 fire cadets this past Friday at Legacy Church, and there was three individuals from Chihuahua, Mexico that participated in the academy, and I thought that was a real asset to our city in showing that we are building relationships with Mexico and our sister city, Chihuahua, and the work that you've done with the Fire Department. But I want to thank you and your, the team from the Academy for your work and your efforts, and the 32 individuals that are now Albuquerque firefighters. I know will do an exceptional job for the residents of the city of Albuquerque. Thank you, Chief.
President Sanchez, thank you. I appreciate that, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that the gift that the Chihuahua firefighters gave us is outside. If you haven't seen it, some people walked right past it, but it's the large chihuahua that's out there.
But it was blocking the Vincent Grego Chambers sign. But it was great.
I prefer to say guarding it, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the administration? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item seven, communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 166 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 166 is the mayor's recommendation of Diron Murphy, Architects PC, Architectural Consultants for Dennis Chavis Community Center, Phase Two, and John Marshall's Health and Social Service Center. And this will require two-thirds votes. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Harris. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 167 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 167 is the appointment of Michael J. Guyer to the position of Chief of the Albuquerque Police Department. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Benton, and this will also require two-thirds votes. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 45 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 45 is approving and authorizing the filing of a grant application and acceptance of potential grant awards for multiple transit department programs from the Federal Transit Administration of the United States Department of Transportation and providing for an appropriation to the Transit Department. This will also require two-thirds votes. We have a second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Penya. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 46 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 46 is approving and authorizing the acceptance of FY 16 2014 geo-bonds from the state of New Mexico for public libraries and the Albuquerque-Burnley County library system and providing an appropriation to the Cultural Service Department in fiscal year 2018. This will also require two-thirds votes. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Borrego. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 46 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 46 is approving and authorizing the acceptance of FY 16 2014 geo-bonds from the state of New Mexico for public libraries and the Albuquerque-Burnley County library system and providing an appropriation to the Cultural Service Department in fiscal year 2018. This will also require two-thirds votes. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Borrego. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on reports of committees. Councilor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, June 11, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 120 and 140, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC 141 and OC 7, that they be approved and acted on at the meeting at which they are reported. In the matter of EC 145, that it be approved. In the matter of R 33, that it do pass and be acted on at the meeting which it is reported. In the matter of R 38, that it do pass. In the matter of R 39 and 41, that they do pass as amended. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Harris to accept the committee report. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Councilor Borrego.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, June 13, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of O-20, that it be withdrawn by the sponsor. In the matter of R-40, that it receive a due pass as amended. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on withdrawals and deferrals at this time. Are there any? See none, let's move on to item nine, the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request removal of items N and O from the consent agenda, please.
That was items N and O?
Yes.
Before we vote on the consent agenda, if there are any individuals here tonight that are being appointed to boards or commissions, would you please stand and be recognized this evening? Thank you for being here and wanting to serve the city of Albuquerque. Appreciate it. And now, we will take a vote on the consent agenda, which you are on. I move approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are back on item N. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions of the administration on item N, which is the mayor's appointment of Ms. Tanisha R. Hale Jones to the Biological Park Board. I don't see much of anything in here that has any reference to interest, background, past experience with the biopark, the zoo and biopark, so I'd just like to ask what those specific requirements are for this appointment.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Jones, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rayel since the biopark is in one of his direct report departments, and I note that the candidate is also here if we have questions of her directly.
Ms. Rayel.
Mr. President and Councilor Jones, I'm looking for the write-up here, so give me one second. First of all, Mr. President and members of the council, our candidate is in the audience and obviously available to answer any questions if you'd like to ask her directly. And the director of the biopark, Ms. Shell Sanchez is here. She can visit with you about it, but she's a long-term educator, over 15 years' experience in both adult and student programs. She is passionate about learning about the programs that we offer at the biopark, and I think it would offer a great opportunity for us as educators to help us with our youth programs and the opportunities that the biopark has to provide that opportunity for kids. But with that being said, maybe I can ask her to come up and introduce herself to you and give her a little bit, a little more about her background.
Mr. President, if you'd like. That would be wonderful, Mr. President.
That would be fun. Ms. Tanisha Hale Jones, welcome. You probably did not think you were going to be in the hot seat.
No, I didn't. Thank you. Hi, Mr. President. Hi. I, my name is Tanisha Hale Jones, and I am a longtime educator. I work at Esquela Dulce Montessori in downtown Albuquerque. I started the junior high program, and one of my commitments to my program is to get my students out in the community. And so, I personally have a lifetime commitment to community engagement. And as a parent, I've taken my son to the biopark for many, many years. He's now a teenager, so he doesn't want to go as much. But I do know that, that, you know, that, the biopark itself is, I think, a shining emblem of what New Mexico is capable of and what Albuquerque offers, its communities, and I certainly hope that my families and my students partake in the richness of Albuquerque through the biopark.
Thank you, Ms. Hale Jones. And question, did you apply? Did you go online and apply for this position?
I did, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you. Did you want to move for appointment? Councilor Gibson.
First of all, I really sincerely want to thank you for this, you know, for stepping up and taking on this position. They're so really very important to the city, and the fact that so many people do that just makes me feel really good, so thank you very much. So, but I am, I'm always a little curious, what, what, what happened to make you, was it because summer was coming on and you didn't have any class, fast rooms, no kids? You miss kids so much that you...
I miss kids so much. No, I think that mostly it's my...
What spurred you?
Well, Councilor Gibson, I think it's mostly my commitment to the community and my city, and I recently moved to downtown Albuquerque, and I really love living there. I grew up in Nob Hill, and so I think just as a local from Albuquerque, I was born and raised here, I just want to give back, and this is another way to do it. I do it in the classroom, but I can also do it in this way, too.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I will move approval of EC 18-157. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Jones. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. Tanisha, thank you for wanting to serve. Councilor Jones.
Thank you.
Item O.
Item O is EC 18-158, the mayor's appointment of Mr. Israel Chavis to the Transit Advisory Board. And I'm reading the write-up, and I don't see anything here that says he's had any experience on a board or that he has, in fact, I'd just like to ask him if he's here. A couple of questions.
Hi, Councilor.
Hi.
Mr. Chavis, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. Thank you for being here. So, do you use the transit system?
I do. I'm a entering third-year law student, and I ride the bus every day to get to school. I live on Forrester, and I take the Blue Line up to the law school, and then I walk up through the north campus up to the law school. In addition to that, I've served as the vice president and interim president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. And as you know, a lot of the transit that goes through the city goes right through our neighborhood association, and so I've dealt a lot with our neighborhood's concerns and comments about not only the new rapid transit system, but transit as a whole in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. And do you serve on any other boards or commissions for the city?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will move approval of EC 18-158, the mayor's appointment of Mr. I will move approval of EC 18-158, the mayor's appointment of Mr. Israel Chavis to the Transit Advisory Board. I have a motion and several seconds. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. Thank you, Mr. Chavis, for wanting to serve. We are going to move the agenda around, and we are going now to item 13, approvals, and this is going to be item D, that is EC 167, the appointment of Michael J. Guyer to the position of Chief of the Albuquerque Police Department. Mr. Guyer? And I'd like to move confirmation. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis, and are there any questions for Mr. Guyer? Counselor Davis? I would just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank you, Chief Guyer, for wanting to serve in this capacity. I know you've taken on the acting role now for a few months, but I've seen your work, I've seen your commitment with the Albuquerque Fire Department, with the Albuquerque Police Department, and the Rio Rancho Police Department, and the work you've done with both of those departments. Both of those departments has been remarkable. I think you have a tremendous amount of respect for the men and women that serve with the Albuquerque Police Department, the rank and file. I've met with the union representatives, and they all have a great deal of respect for you, but I truly believe that the mayor made the right choice in the selection of you becoming the permanent police chief for the Albuquerque Police Department. I had a chance to also meet with you a couple hours ago when we talked about the reforms of the Department of Justice, and I know that you're on top of this. I think this is going to be important to Albuquerque, and it sounds like the monitor is now working closely with you and your team because there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but I really am very grateful that you've made the decision to go and continue to serve and work with the citizens of our community, and I know you have a tremendous amount of love and respect for our community and especially the Albuquerque Police Department, and thank you.
Counsel President Sanchez and members of council, thank you. I'm humbled and honored to be able to serve now as the full-time chief of the city of Albuquerque. This has been my home for many years, and I feel a commitment not only to the department but to my family and everybody else that has to live in this city, and we're going to, we're committed to have taken aggressive stance on crime, getting the DLJ reforms in, developing community policing programs, and definitely recruiting and retaining more of our officers so that we have full staffing and we're able to serve the city at full capacity. At this time, I feel that it's the right time to move forward. I think we're ready, and I think in the six months of internship, I think the mayor portrayed it as a six-month interview, job interview, and I think that we've proven that we've, we've made this, accepted the challenges that are there, and more importantly, we're going to be accountable and accessible and transparent. We're ready to admit mistakes and move forward, and I think that's the key here, is nobody's perfect and no department is perfect, but the only way to, from a lessons learned perspective, is sometimes you learn more from your failures than you do your successes. So, we're going to do that with that in mind, and again, I appreciate your support and the support of the mayor, and I'm ready to serve.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Guyer, and I'm excited about you being in this position. I think in the last six months, I've seen more examples of community policing than I have in 19 years, and, you know, this concept that, of community policing, I mean, a lot of the folks say, yeah, we're doing community policing, but from what I've seen the last six months, there's more of it happening than I've ever seen when I go to neighborhood association meetings and you have three or four officers there that are just open and honest and talking to the folks and, and just all the officers in the community, so I want to thank you for that, and I, years and years ago, we worked together on the party patrol issues, which was very successful, and I just saw an email where we got a grant again, so that's great. So, thanks for everything you've done for the city and look forward to working with you.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Winter, thank you for that. I appreciate your support. Are there any other questions for Acting Chief Guyer? We have one individual that has signed up to speak, so I cannot go to the vote yet, so you're going to have to wait for your confirmation, and that is Emily DeAngelis. So, hang tight, Chief. Thanks. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Counsel President Sanchez and council members. I'm here tonight representing the 9,000 members. Our moms demand action for gun sense statewide to voice our enthusiastic support of Michael Guyer as our permanent chief of police in Albuquerque. In the months that he has spent as interim chief, he has given our group his personal time to help address issues reducing gun violence in our city and specifically to improve the strength of the criminal background check system used by the entire state. He has shown that he is 100% committed to working proactively with members of the community on new public safety measures. He is collaborative, generous with his expertise, thorough, thoughtful, and unafraid to make changes where they are needed, even when that work is difficult. I wish all 9,000 of my members were with me tonight to voice our enthusiasm for his assuming this role in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President Harris, I think, has a question or a comment for the chief.
Just a comment. I just want to thank the chief for being willing to serve, and what I've heard from the rank and file police officers is that they feel that this administration is supporting them more, and I don't, I do not think that by any means we should just give whatever the unions want us to give them or whatever they ask for, and that's certainly not what has happened in the contract, but they, there does seem to be some optimism among the rank and file police officers. I think that is something that's been reflected in a, in a wide margin of support for the contract. I think we really need to get our numbers up if we're going to really make all these other things that we do as a council work, and, and, and just generally, I've also heard other good things in terms of what you're doing out there, and I know you wanted me to call you after it was announced, and sorry I didn't get a chance to do that, but we'll talk soon. I appreciate you, chief.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris, thank you. Counselor Borego.
My comments are also for the process and for Chief Guyer, and I know that James Lewis was the person who spearheaded the interviews and the team that finally made the recommendation to the administration, and I, I want to commend the administration for choosing Mr. Lewis. He is someone that definitely brings integrity, and I think that the process was very transparent, and I think that the public should be made aware that, you know, it, it's a very difficult thing to, to turn the Titanic around, but I think that Chief Guyer has the skills and the knowledge, and I think that his, one of his main skills that I've seen, and I've only known him for a short period of time, is that he listens, and that is huge. And I think that, you know, I know because I've been working with some of your commanders in my district, and I very much appreciate the, you know, effectiveness that they've made, even in short requests, and I really, I really think that you are going to do a fine job for our city, and I know it's a difficult job, and I really hope that, you know, we can continue working collaboratively. Thank you.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Borego, thank you very much. I appreciate your support and kind words. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor for confirmation of Michael J. Guyer to the position of the chief of the Albuquerque Police Department. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. Congratulations, chief.
President Sanchez, members of council, I promise you, I will give you my 100% and won't let this city down. Part of APD, it's in my blood, and I'm going to continue to do the best things for the city, and again, your continuing support and the collaboration of efforts with the council and city government is going to make this a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We are now going to go to item A under approvals, that is EC 142. That is a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 244, IAFF. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Harris. And we have three individuals to speak under EC 142. That is going to be Chris Ortiz, Santos Garcia, and Justice Chaney. Once your name has been called, if you would please come to the front and be prepared to speak, we would appreciate it.
President San, thank you. President Sanchez, members of the council, my name is Chris Ortiz, the EMS chief of Albuquerque Fire Rescue. AFR is proud and excited for the implementation of the Home Engagement and Alternative Response Teams, or HART program. This model of community-based paramedicine will provide the right resource to the right customer at the right time. In 2017, AFR responded to over 106,000 emergency calls for service, of which 87% were emergency medical service responses. This volume has seen continual growth year after year, and we have spent those years sending fire trucks, ladder trucks, and rescue units to everything from toe pain to cardiac arrest. Our goal with this initiative is to proactively address the call volume via those lower acuity typed calls. Our specially-trained HART paramedic teams will utilize their training in navigation services to our highest utilizers and repeat customers to get them to the right resources, while also offering injury prevention and education measures to underserved populations. This model will reduce volume not only for AFR but for the emergency rooms and EMS systems of the city of Albuquerque and Bernaleo County as a whole. A sincere thank you to the members of council for positioning AFR at the forefront of EMS agencies in the nation. The council's advocacy made this initiative possible through our organization's first fully-funded paramedic in-house program, which provided two new paramedic instructors along with seven paramedic firefighter positions each year. These efforts have made Albuquerque a safer city and will give AFR an opportunity to continue to provide advanced life support services to our citizens and our visitors. We thank you.
Thank you, chief. Santos Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. President Sanchez, members of council, a few of you guys are familiar with me from a couple of neighborhood associations, Counselor Davis, Counselor Gibson, good to see you guys again. My name is Santos Garcia, battalion chief of District 2, the busiest district in Albuquerque and one of the busiest in the nation. The implementation of the BLS rescue program will have an immediate and positive impact on the citizens and firefighters of the Northeast and the Southeast Heights. Call volume has grown exponentially every year over the last decade. The Commission of Fire Accreditation International establishes threshold values for unit responses. Any unit responding to over 3,850 calls for service in a year is considered to be working at 110% of their threshold value. Currently, Albuquerque Fire Rescue, AFR, has 11 units operating above the 110% threshold value, most of which are in the Southeast area. The implementation of the BLS rescues is a giant step in reducing frontline unit responses and to provide a more efficient medical services to the community. I'd like to thank city council for their continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez, members of council. I want to thank you for your continued support and advocacy for the Albuquerque Fire Rescue. Your efforts have allowed us to introduce innovative programs such as the community-based paramedicine that Chief Ortiz talked about and add basic life support rescues, which Chief Garcia talked about. These units will improve the efficiency and delivery of medical care to the citizens and visitors of Albuquerque. Albuquerque Fire Rescue responds to more calls per service, per firefighter than any other department in the nation. This council's continued assistance in the implementation of the programs designed to help both firefighters and the citizens they serve is greatly appreciated. The leadership of this council has once again prioritized public safety, and the efforts are measurable and have not gone unnoticed. President Sanchez, members of council, I want to once again thank you for your continued support and thank you for your review and approval of the collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from this council? Counselor Davis.
Thanks. Just for chiefs, for Chief Garcia and Chief Ortiz, you both mentioned sort of our paramedic program, and it's something we've been working on and investing in for years, trying to build that up for BLS rescue, for Central in particular, passing that legislation a couple of years ago, but this contract in particular includes some incentive pay for certified paramedics, and as Justin or somebody mentioned, also some new instructors for the academy that have been invested. One of our challenges has been getting paramedic, enough paramedics to fill those slots. Or do you anticipate that this is sufficient in order to fill our need for paramedics and incentivize firefighters and drivers and others to step up and fill those roles that we need for the preventive side of the work you're doing?
President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, absolutely. I do believe we are taking a step in the right direction. Our next step as an organization is to try to fully, our fully funded cadet class, what will be a lateral class that's going to be hopefully staffed with at least 20 paramedics. That'll give us a large influx of those paramedics to start the program, and now, once for the first time, like we stated, for the first time, you guys have helped us out with our organization to have fully funded positions every year, so we get that influx initially for 2018, and then from here on out, we'll be able to build upon that program, expand our community EMS services, and expand advanced life support services across the city.
I appreciate that, and thank you very much. I think that's a collaborative effort, and I appreciate the administration working quickly in their new capacity to expand this because it builds on the work we've done for years to expand classifications and positions in the alarm room to sort of reduce that workload on those folks and also to expand paramedics so we can do preventive work, and it makes our city safer, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none, we have a motion and a second on the floor for EC 142, the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 244, IAFF. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are going now to approvals and item B, and that is going to be EC 143, the collective bargaining agreement with the Albuquerque Police Department Association, APOA. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? We've got Paul Brum. Welcome, Mr. Brum.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the council. I'll try to be very, very brief on this, but I wanted to, I'll come here this evening not only to support or ask your support for the collective bargaining agreement, but perhaps just as importantly to, to thank everybody here who has been involved in this process, this heavy lifting of trying to get this contract done and trying to actually get the staffing here in town as high as we possibly can. I especially want to thank the mayor's office, Ms. Nair, and Jerry Romero's Division for the help during negotiations, and the courage that this council has shown in terms of trying to put their money where their mouth is in terms of actually police staffing in this town. We believe that all of our objectives that we had during negotiations have been met by this collective bargaining agreement. We had four objectives. One was to make sure that we had a pay plan that would actually recruit youngsters into the cadet program. Two, that we'd have a pay plan that actually would allow us to retain our officers that we actually have right now. Three, that we'll have a plan that will actually allow us to actually recruit laterals from other areas. And four, if we're really lucky and really fortunate, to be able to get some of the officers who have actually recently retired and get those back as well. Both the union and the administration agreed at the table that we believe that we now finally have that plan that we have, and the thanks go to so many people, including many of you who did a lot of the heavy lifting. I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Brum, I understand that in fact you do have tentatively set up quite a few applicants for laterals, and we turned to work both. Would you, would you give us those numbers?
Counselor Jones, I had a meeting two days ago, and I asked that question in case you came up here this evening, and the department can correct me on it, but from what we understand, there are enough applicants to actually have the largest lateral class in our history, and if that, if that kind of a situation continues, that is, is going to be very, very wonderful music to our ears because it looks like we have like 37 applicants for laterals, and that was just in the last month.
Thank you, sir. And how about any numbers for retired officers or...
That's going to be the real, we have had a number of calls, the union has had a number of calls, and I know the department has as well, from officers who have retired to try to figure out whether or not it's actually going to be financially beneficial for them to come back because, quite frankly, a lot of them want to come back, and I believe that this plan actually does provide them with that opportunity, especially with the two-year contract. So, we're hoping on it, we're crossing our fingers on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Brum. I would hope that the police department would give us updates on that as it moves forward in a positive way. in a positive way.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, I'd be happy to provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have one comment. I want to also thank the administration in working with the union and also this council. I think it's important that we are going to increase the number of police officers. I think when Mayor Keller came into office, one of his big concerns was public safety. That was also a major concern of this council. We had to increase the sales tax, which will go into effect July 1st. The administration made the commitment that most of that money would go towards public safety, and in the budget that was proposed to the council and that was passed, 80% of that budget has gone towards public safety. And it's up to us now to make sure that we can deal with these challenges that we are facing, because the number-one priority and number-one concern from people in our community is public safety. And I'm very happy for the rank-and-file that are out on the streets each and every day fighting crime in our community. They will have the additional assistance that they also need in battling some of the problems that we are dealing with here in Albuquerque. But I'm just very pleased with the administration and this council for the work that was done to make sure that we can bring more officers to the city of Albuquerque, and I will be supporting the CC. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve EC 143, the collective bargaining agreement with the Albuquerque Police Officers Association, the APOA. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to go now to item 15. That is other business. If a councilor wishes to attempt to an override of the mayor's veto, they will make a motion to override. If no motion is made to override, or if six votes are not obtained, the mayor's veto will be sustained. At this time, I'd like to move to override. That is EC 168, the veto of R-18-28. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones.
Do we have a comment?
Counselor Harris?
And, thank you, Mr. President. And is this even, I mean, is this an important event? I mean, if it, if we don't even take a vote, I mean, we can still pass the ordinance, and it would still be effective, correct? Is that, I guess--
Mr. Zamont?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, the resolution does three things. One, it expresses the intent of the council to move forward with the project and to move forward with increment financing. But then it also does two other things, and those are critical to the project. The first is it does appropriate the $326,000 for trans tax, and the second, it does appropriate, in this case, $500,000 transferred to Fund 305 for the project support in general. So if the veto is not overridden, we can pass the ordinance, but there won't be two parts of the funding for that.
Are there any questions? Any comments? We have a motion and a second for a veto override. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now going to go to final actions, and that is item A. That is myself and Counselor Gibson, O-19. Counselor Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is the result of work, I think, coming up on a year, more or less. And it certainly had its fits and starts. This is in the far northwestern part of my district, District Seven, and it's south of Montano, just on the west side of I-25, in an area that used to be kind of a hopping place. I bet a lot of people remember when Costco was back there, and before that, it was Price Club. I don't know if anybody remembers Price Club. But there's not, it doesn't have the draw that it once had. And part of that is, you know, it's not real easy to get in and out of. Comcast is over there, so that's a good thing. And so, one of the things I do like about this project is that it's going to give that area a much-needed shot in the arm. But there are a lot of other things that I like about the project, too, and I'd much rather dwell on that than, you know, talk about some of the issues that, and I will, you know, after everybody's had a chance to talk, and we'll talk about some of the issues that we were able to iron out finally and getting to where we are right now. So this is $40 million in the ground construction costs, almost $40 million. If nothing else happens, we are taking a piece of property that nobody wants, it's been sitting vacant for 12 or 14 years, I can't remember how many years, and we're putting a very important improvement on it. Of course, it raises the assessed, taxable assessed value on it. That in itself is a great thing. But this is a company that, they are not a state company, yeah, we'd much rather have somebody who was born and raised in Albuquerque and make something out of dirt and sell it to the Texans. We don't have that. There is not a long line of those people. But we have, we have had some, you know, pretty good success in bringing people in or helping people who are existing here through LITA efforts. I guess my point is this: if we wait for the perfect every single time, we're going to miss a lot of the good. So here we have this company that is on two different continents, has a very effective marketing plan. I would certainly like to be, have Albuquerque be included in that. They have a proven product, very popular. I have never been to one, but I'm told by family and friends alike that they're big hits, unlike golf, or unlike, not unlike golf, unlike other entertainment venues. So it's quite unique. Expect to generate about $15 million in revenues annual. An expectation also of payroll of $4.5 million. That will employ a lot of people. We'll get more into that a little bit later. Anyway, I just wanted, you know, to introduce this, and we do have a substitute, right, that we need to move the sub?
You've got to move a bill first, Counselor Gibson?
Sure, sure.
And I will go and move O-19. We have a motion and two seconds, and now we are back on the floor, substitute. Counselor Gibson? We're on the floor sub?
Okay. Yes, I'm moving the floor sub for O-1819.
We have a motion and a second to move the floor substitute of O-19. Any questions? Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Harris.
Well, I asked Mr. Zamont to, the same question I asked him about five hours ago. Could you briefly go through the, how this sub, substitute bill aligns with the discussions and recommendations of the Development Commission?
Mr. Zamont?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennett, I'd be glad to. The ADC made three recommendations that were included in its motion to approve and send this to the council with the recommendation to approve. The first is already incorporated into the PPA, and that is to reduce the amount of upfront cash support for the project from $500,000 to $400,000, and to make it clear that, you know, the source of the funding is general fund, carry-forward dollars and not actual LITA cash. And so that is already incorporated into the PPA. In the course of the discussion with the ADC over the past two meetings, they've also had concerns about clawbacks, about the length of the clawbacks, about full-time jobs being the measure of job creation, about a job clawback, about the fact that, that project funds or that LITA funds, LITA in the broad sense in this case, should only be used to reimburse developer expenses that have already occurred. And also to make it clear that none of the so-called dedicated revenues, the public safety tax, the hold harmless tax, the biopark tax, and the transportation infrastructure tax, were going to be used to pay the increment payments under the agreement. All of those concerns that were addressed over the course of the two meetings for the ADC have been incorporated into the PPA. There's a 10-year clawback period for the $400,000. There is a 10-year job performance clawback that is up to $40,000 per year if they underperform in terms of jobs. The language on reimbursement has been included in there as well. Now, there were two provisions of the recommendations of the ADC that have not been incorporated into the packet that's in front of you. The first is, I believe, was Commissioner Stroger, who had suggested that since the ADC had agreed that, that 60% of all the revenue generated by the project would be net new, that we should only share 50% of the net new revenue. And so, part of the, part of the conditions that the ADC sent this over, the recommendation that they made to us, was to decrease the increment from 50% to 30%, which of course is a 40% reduction in the amount of funding that will go to the project. The second recommendation that the ADC had that is not incorporated here was that we use whole cloth, the project participation agreement that had been drafted and transmitted to the ADC by the Economic Development Department. Mr. Melendez is much more qualified than I to sort of outline the reasons why that was unacceptable, but that was a recommendation that has not been incorporated into the packet.
Counselor Bennett?
All right, Mr. Melendez.
Mr. President, Counselor, so I think, I think the gist of it is that there was a series of negotiations relative to that particular project participation agreement, one that was provided by the Economic Development Department, and it was discussed with the project team and with council staff and with the members of the administration. And some changes were made to the participation agreement based on those negotiations. However, relevant to this particular project, a number of the deal points, for example, the project proponents didn't believe worked with the proposed project. In addition, there have been a lot of changes since the time of that. You know, we've gone through the ADC a couple of times, at least since the last time that I saw a draft PPA from the administration and, or from the Economic Development Department. And there are new clawbacks relative to jobs and operation of the project that are set out in a different manner than the original participation agreement as proposed by the Economic Development Department. In addition, some changes to the PPA as before you may have some benefits relative, because, relative to the overall project because of the way it's progressed over time. And specifically, just to go through a few of those, the revised PPA, and this was a recommendation of economic development, is that the developers use best efforts to hire local for the construction of the project, which will stimulate GRT locally more than in the event that outside sources were used. In addition, the PPA describes upfront assistance as being deposited into a special fund, which is only accessible upon grand opening of the project. So in essence, what that says is that the funds relative to the project will sit in a lockbox until the time that the project is operational and the developers and operators of the project won't have access to those funds until they've delivered what they promised to the city, which is the full and completed project. There was a provision in the proposed PPA that came over from economic development that appeared to kind of reach into the underlying ground lease for this project. The way that the project is structured is that there's a ground lease held by one entity, and then the top-golf entity is sort of partnered with that in order to move the project forward. And one of the proposals was that the city have discretion over the assignment of that underlying lease. That's not included in the PPA that's before you. However, there are some provisions which I think get to substantially the same thing, which is essentially some new provisions in the PPA before you that deal with the assignment question and the circumstances under which assignments can happen. And essentially, the assignment provisions now mirror those of the lease. So effectively, it's the same outcome, but drafted a little bit differently. So in essence, you know, the reason why the PPA that's before you is before you is because it contains some of those developments and some of the deal points that are specifically relevant to the way that the project has been structured.
Counselor Bennett?
Mr. Melendez, so just with regard to the lockbox, what potential is there, and what does it look like, if it is there, for that, those funds to somehow be repurposed improperly?
Mr. President, I guess, starting at the back end, as we know, relative to clawback provisions, as they've come back to the city before, they can be repurposed for a number of purposes, including general economic development purposes. But before we even get to those clawbacks, the concept of the lockbox is that the city is proposing that it's going to deposit and begin funding the promises that it's making relative to its contributions. But they will sit in this special fund until the time when the project is operational, and it's at that time that the right to access those funds by the project developers sort of perfects. It's at that time that they get to sort of reach into that lockbox. But up until that time, grand opening of the project is the trigger for that. So in the event that the project begins to move forward and does not complete, then the city will not have any obligation to open that lockbox, so the city will retain those funds.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. I'm going to put you back on the spot. So just to clarify in simple terms, as I understand it, is this new amendment, which incorporates the feedback from the Development Commission, the math that the mayor's administration put out through Bieber and looking at the economic analysis here, if I recall, expected that the $30-plus million of construction would generate about $800,000 in new taxes for the city of Albuquerque. Is that ballpark, what's your recollection?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, yes. When we were before economic development, and that was my recollection, I've also seen a number in the study that was around $698,000, if I'm not mistaken, so it's in that ballpark.
That's right. And so, this new provision essentially says that the city of Albuquerque is going to set aside $700,000, some road funds and some other construction supplement funds, but that the company can't get that until they finish the $30 million of construction, which is estimated to return $800,000 to the city. And so, when I do my simple math, there's really two phases of this project, as I see it. One is the construction, meaning all the jobs, all the investment in keeping those 200 folks working for a while, doing that work. The company is going to spend that money in our community, generate new taxes for the city, and only after they open are they eligible to receive the incentive that's less than what the city had generated from that. Is that fair to sort of timeline?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I think that's an important consideration, because, Mr. President and counselors, I think we went, you know, I know we'll get a chance to talk more about this, but I think that's a really important development that sometimes in all the press releases and the quick posts online, I think we missed that point, that, you know, the city and the city council insisted at our last meeting that the developer go back, and we made clear that before we would approve this project, that they include job creation numbers. And so, that's been revised, and Mr. Zamont, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's been revised in this draft, so that the company is now guaranteed or required to show that they created 132 real full-time jobs, not a full-time equivalence by putting part-time jobs together, but real full-time jobs, and showing the maintenance of that over the term of the incentive. And that they're not entitled, if I understand Mr. Zamont or Mr. Melendez, they're not entitled to the extra increment, the one-point-whatever million dollars in extra money. They only get that if they keep their job performance up and if they generate enough revenue to meet their projections, so that the city gets more money, essentially, because they're meeting their sales goals. Is that sort of a ballpark, simple?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, I think so, but I want to just clarify one thing you said, which is relative to the increment revenue. And the increment revenue that's proposed in the PPA would continue as long as GRT is being generated on the site. is being generated on the site. And so, in the event that there is a job performance, you know, miss, that would trigger one of the 10-year clawbacks relative to the upfront funds. But the effect of that on the GRT increment component would be that it would just be lower, essentially, if the project wasn't performing as planned.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate the concerns. I want to hear more from the public and the administration as we go through this. But I do want to say, I think, you know, we've been a little disingenuous with each other through this process, because this is always a give-and-take process, and I chaired the Finance Committee for a number of years, couple of years. We never approve these projects without those final pieces. But the place in which the final negotiation comes and the data comes back from the Development Commission helps us to inform our decision today, I hope that we get to a place where we can have that conversation. I do think the concerns are legitimate about whether the city can be more progressive in the use of our economic development incentives in terms of deciding that we need a minimum number of, say, livable wage jobs have to be included, for example. And I'd like to challenge the mayor's office to work with us to craft those amendments so that we can make our economic development tools more progressive, more workforce incentive. But the ones we have here before us today show that the city, if we invest our money, set it in a lockbox, will get our return back, and that's money we can invest with more money down the road on another job. And I think that's good work by the sponsors, to work through the Development Commission, to work through the data, to get to a place where the city is guaranteed to get our funds back before they open. And I think that's really important in terms of how we understand this deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vice President Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is kind of a difficult project for me in terms of incentives, and although I think we should give some incentives, because this is something which I think could help Albuquerque in terms of tourism, in terms of having something in Albuquerque which is unique, which could be the, something which could really be a tiebreaker in terms of people coming out here. And if there's a Topgolf here, then it might be one of the things that they look at when they decide if they're going to vacation here. And vacation dollars, I think, are almost equivalent to economic-based jobs, because people are coming from out of state and they're leaving their money here. And so, it's not just money that's circulating around, it's actually new money in the economy. However, what I, the thing that makes me struggle a little bit with this is the fact that you're talking about disposable income, you're talking about entertainment, you're talking about the fact that people in the area only have so much disposable income, and you're going to be taking some of the income away from the movie theaters there, the restaurants there, the other golf courses around, and the other entertainment places that have grown up around there, in terms of, you know, the Dave and Buster's and that other place. But in any case, so usually with something like that, you just say, well, let the chips fall where they may, if it's a better, it's a better operation, and, you know, that's the free market. But when we're putting our thumb on the scale on the free market, I think we just have to be kind of careful about that. And one of the things, I guess, getting to a question, is I understand the ADC wanted to limit the increment from, I guess, whatever percentage it is, down to 30%. And I guess they're gonna carve out the taxes that are carved out from grocery receipts, for instance, that go to, I guess, highway and public safety and those things. I guess those are not affected by the increment. But then I thought the ADC wanted to also bring it down to 30% rather than some other percentage. What's in there now and what did the ADC want?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, the ADC had requested two things relative to what you just said. The first is in the PPA, and that is that the ADC wanted to make sure that we carved out from payment of the increment, those increments of GRT that the voters have voted on or that have been approved and dedicated to other purposes. So, for example, the trans tax, which is dedicated to roads, trails, and transit, needs to be carved out. Public safety tax, dedicated to police fire and intervention programs, needs to be carved out. The biopark 1-1/8 needs to be carved out. And finally, the hold harmless, which by ordinance was dedicated, 60%, of which was dedicated to public safety for the first two years of that increment, needed to be carved out. Those changes have been incorporated on the ADC's recommendation into the PPA. The second change that was recommended was relative to the net new money that the project would generate. As you probably know or as you probably heard, we had a very hastily-prepared economic report from Bieber that said that 0% of the GRT generated by the project would be new. All of it would come from within the city or be cannibalized from existing businesses. On the other hand, we had a very rosy report initially from the applicants that said that 100% was gonna be generated from outside the city, there would be no cannibalization. When it was all said and done, based on some comments from the county and also a report that was revised to look at 60%, the ADC settled on 60% as the appropriate number of net new per dollar of GRT created. Based on that and the fact that we were willing to share 50% of the increment with the applicants, the ADC was, well, why don't we just share 50% of the net new? Let's give them half of all the new stuff, and let's keep the stuff that was just sort of shifted around from locations within Albuquerque. The upshot of that meant that the increment that would be dedicated to the project would decrease from 50% to 30% of the total increment, which, as I mentioned earlier, is a 40% decrease in the amount of funds that would be going to the project. And, you know, we have experts here who can speak to this better than I can, but there is a financier at the end of the $1.84 million financing increment mechanism, and I believe cutting the increment from 50% to 30% would just strain that financing relationship a little too far.
Okay, I would like to hear, because that's the one thing, that's like the biggest piece that the ADC suggested that we didn't incorporate, would that be a fair statement?
I think probably the biggest piece that we didn't incorporate was utilizing the Economic Development Department's proposed PPA. I think that had much larger ramifications. However, in terms of project viability, I think they're both important.
Okay. And you say you have an expert that'll talk about the 40% decrease or decrease from 50 to 30, which I guess is 20%, which is 40% of 50%. So, and how much that would go down? We have, somebody could talk about that?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, we've got Mitch Mosesman from 3360 Public Finance, who actually conducted the study at 60%.
Okay, is he here?
He is, if you want to call him.
Sure, yeah, let me just ask that question.
President Sanchez, my name is Mitch Mosesman. I'm with the firm of 3360 Public Finance. And as indicated previously, I prepared a cost-benefit analysis, which settled on the assumption that 60% of the revenue generated by the project would be new revenue. And under that assumption, the city would realize roughly an 8% to 10% return on its investment. Roughly $4 million over a 10-year period would be returned to the city from activity generated by the project. That's gross receipts tax, property tax, and also the value of public infrastructure. And in addition, what I want to point out, as Counselor Davis had mentioned, there's a limited amount of funds upfront that are directly offset by one-time construction GRT, but the remaining participation or share in GRT increment occurs over time. So, if you were to present value that, the amount right now is modeled at $1,840,000. If you were to present value that, you'd get something closer to $1.3 million. So, the total incentive that we're talking about on a present-value basis is roughly $2 million against the $4 million in benefit revenue in infrastructure, which gives you about a 10% return. If you did it in nominal dollars, be about an 8% return.
Okay, and what if we went down to the 30%, which is recommended by the ADC? What would that do to the project? And, because what I'm concerned about is that if you were actually giving a 50% increment and 60% is new money, so that means that almost all the taxes that we would've gotten anyway, well, we're gonna keep those, but only a small portion of the new taxes do we actually get to keep over the next 20 years or however long. I mean, how do you respond to that?
So, again, we ran the scenario that I just described. We did not run the scenario where you take 50% of the 60%, you basically reduce that revenue stream by 40%, which would have a fairly significant adverse impact to the project. But I didn't, I haven't had a chance to quantify that.
Okay, and how long would it, on your best projections, how long would it take before the $1.84 million is reached under the 50%?
Under the 60% scenario, that was repaid within the 10 years. It was, I think, nine years was the last dispersment, if you will, towards that $1.8 million.
Okay, then is it 60% or 50%? What's the increment? Is it 50%?
That was, that was based on the 60% scenario being new and 50% of the increment, at the time that we were running it, it was, it included certain of the revenues that had been carved out. I think it would extend another couple of years when you carve out the, quote, "dedicated" revenues.
Okay, but the increment, you're taking 50% of the non-carved-out grocery receipts tax, is that correct, until you pay $1.84 million?
Correct.
Okay, but you don't know what it would be. We kind of could guess, it'd probably be, I'm guessing it would increase in maybe another five years or something, if you were to take it down to 40, if you were to have a 40% reduction?
Yeah, it would be, if I would do something really quick here. Right, it's gonna be another five to seven years, in all likelihood.
Okay. And how long is the, and is the increment guaranteed, I mean, do they have up to 20 years anyway, under the, if it takes that long?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, until the $1.84 is reached.
So, instead of nine years, it could go up to 15 or, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Winter and then Counselor Bodego.
Mitch, I got a question for you, too. This is interesting, and I want you to kind of clarify this. We had two reports, the Bieber report that there'll be 0% new revenue generated. Your report says there will be 60% new revenue generated with that. That's a huge difference. Did you read the Bieber report? How do you justify that in the 60%?
Sure. So, I did read the Bieber report. The 60% is based on feedback from the ADC meetings that I attended. It's also based on some research that I've done. So, a few points to make. One is that roughly 25% of Topgolf's revenue stream comes from corporate events. So, I looked at that as additional revenue. It's not necessarily, we're not talking about disposable income of residents, we're talking about corporate dollars that now have an opportunity to be spent for corporate events within the city. In addition, the Topgolf facilities have a certain synergy that's been observed elsewhere. So, other businesses want to co-locate near Topgolf, because it does bring in traffic and positively impact their business, and it has the potential to draw additional tourist dollars, visitor dollars, from that standpoint. And another thing that I looked at is that, if you look at consumer research, consumers are spending more of their dollars on entertainment, less on traditional purchases of goods, and they're looking for an experience where they can socialize. And if they can't find that experience, they'll go elsewhere. So, I believe the city has some real opportunity costs here. This is an ongoing trend that is making its way through as the demographics change in this country. And so, there's a real opportunity cost for not having these sorts of venues to capture that demand and that interest. So, your existing revenues are not guaranteed to stay where they are because of this shift in consumer expenditure patterns.
Counselor Bodego.
Thank you, sir. I actually don't have any questions for you specifically. I had some comments that I wanted to make in looking and listening to all of the different discussions over the last couple of months, actually. You know, I spent 28 years looking at land use and planning and zoning in the city and the county, and one of the things that really stood out to me is the actual site itself. The site is not really conducive to a lot of different types of venues because of the configuration of the site, the access to the site, and also kind of the slope of the site. So, when I heard that there was somebody interested in this site, and this site's been vacant for probably about 10 years, I believe, it, you know, it made me stop to think about what is it that Albuquerque is really looking for? And one of the things that we talk a lot about in economic development is destination. And Albuquerque has been the destin, has not been the destination site for most tourists. Most people come to Albuquerque, they fly in and they leave, and they go to Santa Fe or they go to Taos, because that is the destination. So, that, in terms of economic development, that is something that we, as a city, you know, really need to start thinking about, is getting people to spend their dollars in Albuquerque and how we want them to spend their dollars. The thing, the other thing that is really interesting about this particular site is that it's on Montano or Montgomery, whatever you want to call it, and it's cross-traffic that goes east to west. And I happen to live on the west side, and I cross that traffic on a regular basis. Usually, I'm on the phone for an hour, waiting to get across the river, thinking, gee, I wonder what I could do on the east side that, you know, I, I mean, and I'm a golfer, so it would be great to stop and maybe play a, you know, have a few rounds of golf and not spend an hour on the phone between 5:00 and 6:00 trying to get across the river. So, I think about those types of issues. The other thing that's really important, and no one has called this out, is that there is a railrunner transit stop right on Montano, and I know because I helped locate it there. So, I think that, you know, there's a lot of traffic that, both automobile and railrunner traffic that goes, sort of crosses there. So, I think in terms of the configuration, you know, the other thing is you have I-25, which is right there, and my understanding is that they're going to make the access to Culture Boulevard or Culture Road a little more accessible, which, you know, I do have a question about financial guarantees for infrastructure. So, that is something that I'm interested, but the county of Bernal Leo has probably also looked at all of these issues, and they have decided in, you know, the best interest of the city and the county, that they would put money into this particular project. So, that gives me a little bit of, sort of, you know, a feeling of comfort that five commissioners have, not in all of their districts, have supported this, or at least four of them, I believe, voted in favor of it. So, when I think about destination, I look to, and I understand local economic development, because I am a small business owner, and I'm not making a lot of money these days, by the way. But I will say that, you know, when I think of PGA and I think of LGA, and I know, I happen to know that Topgolf is a partner with PGA. And I'm thinking, you know, these partnerships that are national and in some cases international, I mean, what could that bring to making, helping Albuquerque become more of a destination site? Attractions, things that make people want to stay in our city. Attractions, things that make people want to stay in our city, you know, like the tram and hopefully the petroglyphs, and places that they can go and spend their money, the biopark. And so I see this not just as a small business, or, and it's really not a small business because it's a national company, and I know that's been some of the discussion and the disagreement, but what about the other businesses that will spin off because of this particular use? So I ask myself, you know, there are going to be a lot of other businesses that will be spinoffs, such as printing, such as, you know, restaurant, food, manufacturing, I mean, there's a whole lot of different construction projects, I mean, construction itself. And so, you know, and so let's say it doesn't work out very well, and it doesn't make us the destination site because somebody said, well, Cynthia, take off your little starry-eyed glasses. But the question is, what about our youth that are unemployed? What about older Americans who are on fixed incomes like social security, who can only make up to fifteen thousand dollars a year, by the way? What about those people that need jobs? I mean, you know, I think this would fill a need for a lot of different types of people that are looking for jobs in our city. The other thing that comes to mind is the charitable contributions that PGA and Top Golf, they're in partners, they're in partnership, make to other communities. I mean, we have a lot of needs in our city, and, you know, those are not included in the economic studies that I'm hearing about. You know, what about the taxes that will be generated? Property taxes, GRT taxes, not just from this particular use but from spinoff uses? I haven't heard a word about that. So I raise all of these issues because I think that, you know, the timing was somewhat limited, but also, and then all of a sudden I hear about another company that might be local, and they're proposing something similar, but I've seen nothing. I've seen nothing. I mean, it's like, you know, you can't, you can't come to us at the last minute and say, hey, well, wait a minute, that's the use that I was going to propose. You know, I was looking to open a golf place or, you know. So it's kind of, like, it makes me wonder, you know, how serious that other company was, and, I mean, I've seen absolutely nothing from the other company. That, you know, I would like to know if, you know, is that really a reputable business or reputable company? If they, you know, because people are seriously looking at this particular use now, all of a sudden there's someone else. I think we need to look at it on its merits, and we need to look at it, and yes, we should not be giving the farm away. Sarita and I talked about this a lot, but if it's going to generate the income that is stated, and we're not really going to be on the hook, then we haven't lost anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back, and we've got a motion and a second on the floor for the floor substitute of O-19. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed, that carries unanimously. Now, let's go to David Buckholz, who will be making a presentation for Top Golf, and then we will go to general public comment on this item. Mr. Buckholz, state your name for the record and who you are representing.
Mister President and members of the council, my name is David Buckholz. I'm with the Rhodey Law Firm, and I'm representing the interests of the applicant here this evening. To be fair, I thought that Mr. Zaman, Mr. Melendris, Counselor Gibson, Counselor Borrego stole a lot of my thunder. So I just want to reserve just a couple of comments, but then, of course, be happy to stand for questions. Obviously, this is a difficult matter of policy where there may be differences, but I do believe that my client, who will bring a forty million dollar project to this city, has acted in good faith, has listened to the Development Commission, has listened to the public comments that were made by the administration, has negotiated very hard with the sponsors, with the council staff, and I believe came to an agreement that is fair for the city and fair for our clients. Just to briefly identify, as Mr. Zaman already said, we did go back and identify a full-time jobs commitment for Top Golf, at least one hundred and thirty-two full-time positions, and I want to indicate, as we were requested to and as the PPA, the Public Project Agreement will say, that those full-time jobs are at least thirty-two hours a week, so that they meet the concerns that were raised with us. We provided clawbacks for failure to meet the jobs commitment. We provided clawbacks for the sensational business, a ten-year term to the clawbacks, which doesn't begin until the grand opening, and I think several comments were made earlier about how these, the lockbox arrangement that were made allows no monies to be paid to this project until there is a grand opening and that activity actually begins. We have a guarantee of the four hundred thousand dollars by the parent of the local Top Golf entity. That's the parent that I am advised owns the substantial amount of assets of Top Golf in the country and is a deep pocket, if you will. And I believe those matters have been discussed with council staff. Just one other point that I want to make, you know, the LEEDA program is one that's been going on for fifteen or twenty years. There are economists who have certain theories about how that program ought to work and what jobs ought to be created, but I will say this about this one. Rarely is there one that is a forty million dollar construction project that has no industrial revenue bond and that significant improvement of what has been a property that has had no activity for a long time in a midtown infill situation. The property taxes of the property will go much higher, and those property taxes will be paid not only to the city but to the county, to the school district, and also to the state of New Mexico. No industrial revenue bond here, which means that all of the personal property assets that are brought in from out of state, I understand there will be several million, will pay a compensating tax to the state, probably an amount that approaches the amount that the city has found funds to forward here as well. Significant construction, GRT, significant GRT going forward. And while I'm not an economist, I take a look at this, these theories of, you know, economic-based jobs and what they do and how they might help the community, and I believe they probably do, but I'm at a loss to know how they present real hard dollars in terms of the hard dollars that we're talking about here. Increased property taxes, significant gross receipts taxes. I know there's a debate about cannibalization and how much is new and how much isn't, you heard a lot about that. Significant compensating tax to the state of New Mexico. Those are real hard dollars. It's not hard to understand those. So this project at forty million dollars will bring a lot of that, and I hope that the council can act in a way that will allow clients to start development here. With that, I'm happy to stand for questions. I have with me Mr. Mosesman, who you've met, Mr. Drew Snyder, Ms. Jessica Sandberg, and Mr. Drake, Matt Drake, from the Development Group. My partner, Justin Holtz, who you know, who worked much harder than me on all of this over the last two weeks. Justin deserves a lot of credit. You might not know him as long as you know me, but he is every bit as good as I am, so appreciate all the work that he's done. Anyway, we're happy to stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Buckholz or the Development Team? Mr. Buckholz, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister President.
Let's go to general public comment. I will call the first six names. Once your name has been called, be prepared to speak. Again, the two-minute time limit will be invoked. The first speaker will be Mike Alvarez, followed by Norm Schreffels, followed by David Porter, followed by Gretchen Lent, followed by Lisa Ellen Uria, followed by Rudolph Serrano. Welcome, Mr. Alvarez.
Good evening. I've been listening to this Top Golf project, and I hear a lot of big figures, and those figures, if they're coming from Denver, Colorado, and from Texas, keep in mind that Texas is three times bigger than we are, and they've got more projects and more businesses than we got. And Denver has been growing a lot faster and bigger than we are, so they have the same situation there, and so the money that this company wants, Denver and Texas has it in their hand. We don't. We haven't generated any money to pay something like this, this whole two years that we've been having a lot of destruction projects that has been going on. A lot of the projects that we've been doing hasn't generated any money coming back to the city at all. We're deep in debt, especially because of the art, and so we can't afford to get deeper in debt. We need to get out of this hole, and I don't have any idea how this is going to happen. If we keep on buying and buying into projects, one after the other, we're going to go bankrupt. And I went to a meeting at a motel here about six months ago, people that turn properties around, and they said that Albuquerque is on a downfall. And now that I'm seeing it, they told me the truth. It's going bigger and bigger into a hole, and we need to get out of it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Norm?
President Sanchez and council, I introduce myself, Norm Schreffels. I am with the local investment team of Big Shots. We're all local. We've all grown up here. We've all raised our families here, gone to school here, and we want to keep the money here. We're a very similar type of event, golf event location as Top Golf. We feel we have better technology. We certainly have a lot more to offer our employees. Our starting wages are going to be a couple of dollars an hour higher than our competitor. Our perk package, we have in-house medical, we have assistance in daycare, we have assistance in purchasing your first home, purchasing a car, all of this for our devoted employees. Again, we are local. We are keeping at least eighty percent to, if not ninety percent, of what we generate locally, not sent back, not sent out of state. Again, we're all local businessmen, businesswomen here, and a comment of, nobody has come forward to talk with you guys about Big Shots and who we are is not true. We've sent and have proof, all of you have received emails about.
Sir, I was talking about a competitor that was being discussed.
I'm probably that competitor. However, we, you know, certainly have you seen us in the news, and nobody's reached out to us as well, except for the mayor's office. So again, we're a similar, we're a similar golf destination location. We are bringing additional restaurants and entertainment to our property besides just Big Shots, and we have a lot to offer, and we're going to keep it here locally. There's people that can attest to myself and our other partners of how we give back to the community. That's basically it, unless you have a question.
Thank you. I think Counselor Jones has a question for you.
Thank you, Mister President. Sir, thank you for coming here this evening. Have you applied for a permit?
We have not yet. We are in our design stage. We have our location selected. We're under an LOI with the landowner, and we're ready to move forward. And regardless of if our competitor comes to town or not, we are still proceeding. We are still going to do this, and we have more to offer.
Good, and I'm pleased to hear that. It'll be nice to have some competition in town. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Norm. David Potter, followed by Gretchen Lent. Welcome, sir.
Counselor President Sanchez, council members. In December of 2017, the Journal and Channel Four reported that Big Shots was coming here. Big Shots will provide more jobs with better pay. They're asking for no money, as Norman said, eighty percent profits. And if you look into the technology of it, it's a lot better technology. They're using Doppler radar. You can bring your own clubs. A lot of things are a lot better. Council stated in print that they have done their due diligence. If that's true, how do you justify giving away tax dollars to an in-fear, out-of-state company? Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen Lent?
President Sanchez, council members, thanks for hearing from us. In regards to the money proposed to give to Top Golf, I am curious with the recommendation, but also the concern still coming from the Economic Development Council, with all of the questions that they have and how this was put together and how they were going to kind of let this go forward, but you're not really following the guidelines, why that's something that we're going to let go forward instead of fixing a little bit more than what's come forward already. As far as local dollars, when you're talking about working with a, pardon? When you're talking about working with a local company, with local investors, local builders, and every hundred dollars that goes into that business, sixty-eight dollars stay in here. When you're looking at an out-of-state company, only forty-three dollars does. So those are the questions that I have when we have somebody that's local, somebody that's willing to do it, and is not asking for any of the city's money to better it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Ellen Uria?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. May I give you these to hand out? President Sanchez, councilman, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today, and what I'm handing out to you is twenty-eight letters from small, local business people in Albuquerque in support of using LEEDA funds to bring Top Golf to Albuquerque. There's been many talk about jobs today, and they stated in the letter that they would rather see three hundred or one hundred and twenty-three, the number's been moving around, jobs come to Albuquerque, no matter what kind of jobs they are, because right now we're in desperate need of jobs. I think Counselor Gibson said, you know, we're turning away good for best when we haven't even seen what best is. The other thing I wanted to note is each of these individuals here represent small business people like myself, insurance folks, a dentist, a couple of doctors, who also stated that most of their colleagues have left and flighted the city because they're unable to make money here. Let me see, who else? Surveyors and others, there's twenty-eight there, and I had about ten more that came in after I had to leave to come here. So they've asked you, and I'm standing here representing them, to ask you to vote yes today in support of LEEDA funds for Top Golf. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudolph Serrano?
Counselor Sanchez, members on the council, it's time to move from Balloon Pueblo to a big city. This is a great opportunity for us to move towards being an entertainment center for the United States. Look at the big picture. The economy is falling down. We're heading to a recession. The global warming is destroying all the golf courses around the size of the country. You know, the rich is getting richer, and what happens when the rich gets richer? They play golf. You know, so this is one of the only opportunities to get into the actual business where we can have our money back in ten years. Everything else is going to go down. So this is a great opportunity to our city, you know, to start going, you know, towards that direction of bringing people here. I support them, and I hope you guys support me, supporting them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Billy, I think it's Rup or Coop, Jim Trump, Matt Whitaker, Antoinette Whitaker, and Tamara Portney. If your names have been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. And state your name for the record to make sure we got it correct.
I'm Billy Rup.
Go ahead, proceed.
So just a quick question. Basically, everybody's already said the same thing. I'm just curious, I mean, having something like this here would be awesome. I just don't understand why we need to gamble with money we don't have. So that's basically my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Trump, Matt Whitaker.
President Sanchez, Jim Trump, I used to be the chairman of the Beach Water Park. I was on that board when we chose to tear it down. It's really unfortunate because for several summers, I used to watch families go there, play. I saw picnics, I saw corporate events, and it was well-used, but the capital investment that went into the Beach Water Park was its final destruction. But the capital investment that went into the Beach Water Park was its final destruction. I would've loved to have had a national company or a regional company affiliated with me, where we could've shared the cost of marketing, we could've helped on the events, but we didn't have it. So that locally-owned company did not make it due to the capital expenditures. I very much support Topgolf, and I look forward to them being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Whitaker?
Good evening. Uh, I just kinda wanna reiterate a bunch of what everybody else has said. Uh, why does everybody feel so strongly that Topgolf needs this $2.6 million? Uh, you know, we're bringing in Big Shots, or Big Shots is coming in, uh, the fair market, you know, why can't they compete for it? Why do we have to give them money? We shouldn't have to. The market will bear what it'll bear, and let it be, let it be. Thank you.
Thank you. Antoinette Whitaker?
Hello. Um, I just wanna let you know that I am affiliated with some members of the, that are bringing in Top, uh, Big Shots, and they do donate to charities that are in need. I've worked with many of them on charitable events and also in business. They're a very reputable investment group, and they also give a lot back to our community.
Thank you, Antoinette. Tamara Portnoy, followed by James Cook, followed by David Barber.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tamara Portnoy, and I'm here representing Cool Springs Trampoline Park, a local business that's been in Albuquerque for five years, over five years, and is also doing an expansion. We looked at the Topgolf location for a couple of acres and spoke to Mr. Trump about that. We ended up at a position on San Mateo, which was an infill, we purchased it, we've acquired our funding. It hadn't occurred to me to ask the council for money, but I'm standing here today telling you that my fully locally-owned, woman-led business is a direct competitor of Topgolf, and their arrival will impact me personally. Uh, if, if you are going to approve the Topgolf funding, my request would be that I receive similar and proportional treatment for my expansion project as well.
Thank you. James Cook, David Barber?
My name is James Cook, and I've heard the Rosie projections and the finances and the numbers and the spreadsheet sorts of things. I'd like to give you a perspective associated with culture, based on twenty-five years in the venture capital industry along the West Coast and East Coast. You are the leaders of Albuquerque. Your vote on this particular thing sends a really strong signal. If you vote to give $2.6 million to a company with locations in Australia, the UK, and throughout the US, you are telling the local business people, we prefer to bring in outside people and support them with tax dollars. What I've heard is a three-eighth percent increase in the grocery receipts tax will bring in somewhere between forty and fifty million dollars. The $2.6 million that the city is, not to count what Burnaleo County has already approved, is somewhere between five point two and six point five percent of that entire tax increase going to one company. You are tilting the playing field in favor of a large competitor to local businesses who is fully capable of funding its own business expansion. And if it's not capable of funding its own business expansion, as a taxpayer and resident of this area, why should I support it? Thank you.
Thank you. David Barber, followed by Brian Dreamco, followed by David Sanchez, followed by Juan Torres, followed by Athena Kristadulu. Go ahead, proceed.
President Sanchez, board members, thank you for allowing the time. Um, I am a lifelong resident of Albuquerque. I retired in Albuquerque, and, and there is not a lot of entertainment opportunities for us. And as stated before, I, I also believe that the revenue generated by this company coming into town will far exceed the donations that the city is being asked to contribute to help them come to town. And I support this project, and I strongly urge you guys to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Dreamco? Welcome.
Welcome. I thank you, and Mr. President and councilors, which are, I believe that this proposed Topgolf project will create an economic development by providing a very unique venue that business and families can use to promote the Albuquerque area. It's a nice blend with the other entertainment in the area, the main event, uh, bowling center. Uh, there's gonna be soon Urban Air, which is a, uh, skydiving facility built in that area. There's a large movie theater just up the road, and, and the tr- the trampoline parks that are in that area, there's actually two, and I think the, they're gonna benefit by having more tourism in the area also. Uh, I believe it'll help in recruiting conventions to Albuquerque and other similar events, and it's gonna be a, a boon to the balloon fiesta. When people are done watching the balloons about eight or nine in the morning, they're gonna be looking for a place to go. So I think it's a win for that. We've already talked about the jobs being created, but I believe I've heard many of the people at the Economic Development Group say that they've never seen anything like this funded through LITA. Well, I wonder if, if we have never done something like this is a good reason not to do something, because if that's the case, we'd probably still be living in caves, never have had airplanes, or we'd never gone to space or the moon. You know, the argument that the city should not be involved in entertainment also doesn't hold water. The city funds parks, it funds art, it does baseball stadiums and municipal golf courses, trails and open spaces. Uh, I think I saw Mariachi something or another on the agenda for later tonight. When it, it is good for the citizens, the city has always found a way to fund. And another argument is that it would take money from other entertainment businesses. If competition is a criteria to reject a project, how do we explain Walmart? Everything I've outlined says the project is good for the city, the funding source has been found to be legitimate. Uh, i- in the Economic Development Committee hearings, they said it does meet the criteria. I know my family, I love going there, and I have family that is looking forward to coming in from out of town, they do every year, to participate in places like this. Thank you so much, and we support the project.
Thank you. David Sanchez?
President Sanchez and council members, my name is David Sanchez. Uh, just to let you know that on behalf of my golfing peers, I think this is a very, very good, uh, opportunity for family members to get out, and our gen- our younger generation right now, uh, you don't hardly see them on the golf courses. And I think this is gonna be an opportunity for them to be able to get, learn the fundamentals, and I think they'll be able to go out and play golf. So, I'm in, fully supportive of this, and I appreciate that you, I hope you vote for this, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Athena Kristadulu, followed by Christina, Christina Rodrick, followed by Ron Bohannon, followed by Cal Mitchell, and then Billy Mitchell. Welcome.
Thank you. President Sanchez, city councilors, my name's Athena Kristadulu. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Winter for improving the walkability near Alameda Ventura. I have a letter thanking him from residence, and I'd like to thank the council for Resolution eighteen, um, yeah, Resolution eighteen, which is to review the, using the 2015, 2018 Energy Conservation Codes instead of our current old wasteful 2009 codes. I say that because it's important to me, as I serve on the Albuquerque Energy Council as the chair. And I sup- I was gonna say I support Topgolf coming with the appropriate safeguards to the city fiscal situation, but after hearing about Big Shots and the, um, trampoline, I think we need to make sure that we're doing, being fiscally equal to everybody. But one thing I'd like to say for all of them is I'd like to make sure that they follow the 2018 enter- Energy Conservation Code in their construction and use clean energy. And speaking of clean energy, I have a confession to make. I'm a reformed flat-earther. You've heard of them. My son has met them at college. They support their belief with very interesting logic and different science. Yes, they exist, and in a way, I used to be one of them. But, I have to go back in time a few years. You see, I was in the last group the Admiral interviewed, Rear Admiral Hyman Rickover, father of the nuclear navy. I passed his character test to teach nuclear thermal power to sailors running the nuclear power plant on submarines and carriers. No boom, just zoom and electricity. During those four years, I learned to view nuclear with awe, it was awesomely powerful, but respected because of the safeguards I encountered when I stepped out of the classroom and entered the real working spaces of the nuclear power plant on land and at sea. But it was after I left for my next career, the hardest one I've ever had, before I learned of its dark side, which I'll go into in another comment period. For right now, I'd like to invite you to the Solar Fiesta on the third Saturday in October, the twentieth of October, run by the New Mexico Solar Energy Association. It will create a fossil-free zone.
Thank you, Athena. Christina Rodrick, followed by Ron Bohannon. Welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez and city councilors. My name's Christina Rodrick, and I'm here to let you know that I am in support of Topgolf. I'm an Albuquerque native, and I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I've been, um, had my eye on this site for a long time. And I'm not going to sit here and reiterate the economic benefits that a lot of the folks here have shared with you today, but I'm here to say that this project has been in the works for many years. Um, I'm sure there are several hundred real estate brokers who have tried to bring other entities to this site, and a lot of time and energy amongst brokers, city councilors, o- other government officials, and they've spent a lot of time on this. If golf car, if Topgolf goes away, basically what we're doing is we're shutting the door on potential, um, income in the next twenty, eighteen to twenty-four months. If this does, project doesn't work out, who knows how long it will be until another, um, company can be found. The other thing is this, Albuquerque needs jobs, not just millennials, but everyone, you know, from my age to older and younger can use a part-time job, you know, or a full-time job, and I think that this, this project will generate that. And last but not least, you know, I'm not a golfer. I find, um, trying to get golf clubs and go out to a course to be very intimidating, but hearing their concept, I have, you know, I think I could take my family, we can go with some friends, have the things we need to play, and go ahead and start enjoying golf. So I urge you to vote yes to use LITA funds, and I hope you, um, support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron Bohannon?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, Ron Bohannon, 5571 Midway Park. I wanted you'd all to, to think back to your first job, and, and just think about that. My first job was at Albuquerque Country Club, and I started at, every morning at four-thirty in the morning in the golf maintenance. I happened to be with nine individuals that, uh, joined me through that summer, and, uh, those nine individuals, uh, we, we actually learned the value of the game, and what I'm pointing out is this is an industry, it's not just jobs. And so your first job, it doesn't matter what it is, it's your first job, and keep thinking about that. This is your first job. So, of those nine individuals, um, seven I've kept track of, one owns a contractor drywall here, another's a professor at law school in, uh, University of Florida. Um, one happens to own an engineering company, you can figure that one out. One, uh, pursued his career in the Air Force, uh, one was in the real estate development, still in, in town. One is a president of a management organization of an R&amp;D, uh, business development. The other sat on the Chicago Board, on the Chicago Stock Exchange. My point is, we need jobs, we need all sorts of jobs. This is an industry that needs jobs, and it's our first job for a lot of folks, and it teaches a lot of values that we really need to push forward. And I really push you to say and support this project in moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bohannon. Cal Mitchell, followed by Billy Mitchell, followed by Matt Thompson, followed by Steve Abraham. Welcome.
Hi. Uh, so my son is Cal, he was gonna testify, uh, but he had a class at CNM that he had to go to, he's taking this summer, so, I'm Billy Mitchell. So we're both here, and we were just gonna discuss the, we went to San Antonio to see a friend of mine over spring break, and they have a Topgolf there. You don't have to take clubs, it's the first time we'd ever been, and it was great fun. It was great fun, there was families everywhere, everybody was having a good time. My son has, uh, my son had a good time, my friend has a five-year-old who he was able to play and enjoy it. It's, it's very family-friendly, not to mention, everybody's talked about all the jobs that it's gonna bring, and how, next year, he'll be sixteen. He'll, he would love the opportunity to go work at a place like that over the summer. It's, it's something that, growing up here in Albuquerque, we never had. I've been here for my whole life at forty-one years old, we've never had anything really quite like this, and it's a, it's a good opportunity for the city, and it scares me that if we were to make this so difficult on them, that what other kinda company's gonna wanna come here and do something later on down the line? If they look back at this and they see just how hard it was, it's gonna scare a lot of places away. Instead of welcoming, welcoming them and trying to do our best to help them, uh, it would scare them off. So, we're in full support, and if he was here, he'd tell you he was in full support too, so, you got both of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Billy. Matt Thompson, followed by Steve Abraham, followed by David Peters, followed by Lynn Patterson, followed by Tad Naminski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. My name is Matt Thompson. I'm a recent retiree to Albuquerque of about just over three years. I'm a homeowner, I'm a citizen of the US, uh, and, uh, I find that I'm, uh, really enjoying Albuquerque, I love it here, I have friends and family here. And what, eh, as a newcomer, I guess what I'm seeing and feeling and hearing, uh, from local news media and whatnot, and from people in the room, uh, that, uh, I, I would caution you to beware of that venture capital siren call, as I would put it. What I also hear is that this, the, the venture capitalists have vast, deep pockets compared to the amount of money that you're deliberating, deliberating over, uh, it almost sounds like chump change, to my way of thinking. Albuquerque needs police officers, Albuquerque needs safety on the streets. Those aren't the only things that the city needs, uh, and I believe many in the city feel very strongly, uh, and I hear that tonight as well, that now is really not the best time to have this project go forward. I, I, I hear that you are being very deliberate in your, in your consideration of the project. I have confidence that you will review, and that you'll continue to review. My suggestion would be to delay the project a year to three years, keep an open mind to it. I don't mind paying the grocery receipts taxes that I pay, uh, in fact, I support that. So, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve Abraham?
Hello, councilors, Councilor President Sanchez and councilors. My name is Steve Abraham. I'm a, uh, native here, uh, born and raised, and I support whatever it takes from being Topgolf here to New Mexico. First of all, I have four points: family entertainment, jobs, GRT, and property taxes. And I, I believe Albuquerque needs tax revenue to pay the new officers, and the only way tax revenue is generated is through business. Uh, I heard a lot about, uh, it may take away, Topgolf may take away from golf courses. I think, uh, uh, Counselor Harris was saying something about that. If anything, it promotes it. You cannot play around a golf at Topgolf. If you go in there, uh, you know, you have your, your friends or your family, you use their clubs, or you can bring their own, your own, uh, you hit to targets, I'm sure there'll be a lot more said about this, but I just wanted to set that straight. It, it promotes golf more than it takes away from golf. You know, and they say, another one, Main Event's been here for quite a while, I've never been to Main Event, not that I have anything against it. Uh, I was in Gilbert at a Topgolf there, and Main Event was building right next to it. Not, Topgolf was already open and go, and, uh, Main Event was building right next to it. But, anyway, I guess, uh, that's all I have to say in promoting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Peters, followed by Lynn Patterson, followed by Tad Naminski, followed by Paul Gessing. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, David Peters, President Sanchez, councilors. I'm a thirty-five-year resident, Eisenhower Aladurado, UNM, and business owner. I'm here to voice my support for the use of LITA funds to bring Topgolf to Albuquerque. Obviously, it will create much-needed jobs, it'll increase the property tax revenue for- Obviously, it will create much-needed jobs, it'll increase the property tax revenue for this longstanding vacant property, and will also attract much-needed affiliate corporate partners. But much more than that, my seven-year-old loves to play golf, but he loves Top Shots, which was the TopGolf deal, and if anything, I can get him to stop watching Teen Titans Go, I'm all for it. So I want you to vote yes, so I can look forward to taking my seven-year-old to TopGolf and all of its attractions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Patterson?
Good evening. My name's Lynn Patterson. I'm glad to hear that everyone in the room seems to be in favor of a venue of this sort, because I think it's an awesome opportunity for Albuquerque to expand its tax base. I do happen to know the developers for Big Shots, and I do know they're green builders, and I know that they're going to strive hard to utilize water and solar power in their facility as well. So we'll have some competition, as you mentioned. But a couple of questions that I had, the 2.6 million is what I'm having a hard time with, why do we have to pay that out? Question to President Sanchez, you know, it's true that you were edimently convinced that you needed to put in place the regressive gross receipts tax increase, 7.5% to 7.85% to pay for the police just a few short months ago, correct? I believe. As far as you said, this vote tonight will be one of the most difficult votes I make as an Albuquerque city councillor. My firmament is that we have no other choice, as per reported errors of enchantment website titled TopGolf, a case study in misguided economic development publicized by Rio Grande Foundation. So a city that doesn't have enough money to pay for its police just a few short months ago, now has plenty of money to subsidize an out-of-state billion-dollar company for a golf facility whose profits are going to flow to Texas. I think we should give the local developers an opportunity that are not asking for any money, to see what they can do.
Thank you, Lynn. Tad Neminski?
Thank you. My name's Tad Neminski. Well, let me start from the top. Who's David Buchholz? He can't even pronounce his name correctly. Deutsch, yes. Well, no, I'm talking about lawyer, who's politician, who promoting this project. Well, do you think he, people, you know, because, do you think that he cares for Albuquerque? Yes, he cares for his pocket, first of all. That's right. Yes, he's politician, appointed many times by city councils, this council, to different boards, advisory, et cetera, et cetera, and he's right here associated. Now, how many golf courses do we have in the city of Albuquerque? Who owns it? Are they bringing any revenue? Do we have any professional, national-level championship? No, we do not. More money to outside, stay outside state interest. Well, of course. Well, I'm just running out. And money, who's money? Of course, from taxpayer, always taxpayer cover in form of taxes. Now, I hear also 260 million on the last meeting, worth over 20 years. Those number, 260 million over 20 years. I'd like to answer, council, answer that. Okay, well, of course, they take business from Uncle Clay, Putt-Put, and Hinko, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Paul Gesing, followed by Jim Bakter, followed by Paul McKinney, followed by Chris Schroder. Welcome.
Good evening, Council President and fellow councilors. My name's Paul Gesing, president of Rio Grande Foundation. Last time I saw you all, you were raising my taxes back in March, and if you want jobs, if you want economic development, keep the money in our pockets, don't tax it away, and then distribute it to companies that can hire attorneys and lobbyists to fleece the taxpayers yet again of their money. TopGolf, they have their analysis, they have their economic data, either Albuquerque's a viable market for them, we have enough disposable income, or it's not. This money that the taxpayers are being asked or forced to provide is ultimately not going to make the difference in whether they create all of these fantastic things that they say they're going to provide. I don't recall much hullabaloo when Putt-Put on San Mateo went out of business, there was no subsidies demanded, there was no outcry at city council, we didn't have a meeting. It was the only Putt-Put that I knew of in this city. Yeah, there was one at, on Tramway, but that's not an official Putt-Put, so I think we can all just dispense with the idea that this is creating any net jobs. Are we transferring wealth from we, the taxpayers, to another private company? Shifted demands, that's what economists call it. There's no new money flowing into the economy. We're taking money from one group and giving it to another that's got a lot more political power, and that's unfortunate, but that's par for the course, so to speak, around here. I play golf, I've been to a TopGolf, it's cool, it's not worth my taxpayer dollars, though, so thank you.
Thank you. Jim Bakter, followed by Paul McKinney, followed by Chris Schroder, followed by Ashad Rizou. If your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Jim Bakter? Paul McKinney?
Thank you, President Sanchez, councilors. Tax the poor to feed the rich. That seems to be the motto of this city council. Everyone, except Councilor Winner, just voted to raise our taxes by $55 million. Now, all of a sudden, we got an extra 2.6 million just lying around to give to a big out-of-state company. To bring an entertainment venue nonetheless to Albuquerque, not something that's going to produce anything, not a productive company that's going to create actual wealth in this city, just a company that is going to consume, as has already been pointed out, people's excess income. Well, that money's already being spent in the city. Last year, when they were talking about a tit on the West Side for Western Albuquerque Land Holdings, Counselor Gibson very intelligently pointed out that she didn't believe that this would be any net new retail sales, it would simply transfer money from the businesses already in the city out to the West Side. Tonight, Counselor Harris has expressed the same concern for this facility. I'm of the opinion that this will, in the long term, have no net benefit. Yeah, in the short term, in the very short term, yeah, we're going to have some construction jobs, and we're going to have a little bit of new money coming in, as Counselor Davis estimated about 100,000. That's the estimate. Well, estimates are usually wrong, so that's not a very big margin of error. But let me tell you about one of my friends, that your economic policies are hurting. They have two little kids, dad works hard, he's going to school, they make $25,000 a year, trying to support this small family, and yet, you want to tax them more to give money to a big national company. I do have one question about the ordinance. Page four, line 28, it says, "The project is necessary and advisable and in the interest of the public, and will promote the public health, safety, morals, convenience, economy, and welfare of the city and its residents." How does taking 2.6 million from hard-working families in Albuquerque and giving it to TopGolf do that?
Thank you. Chris Schroder? Ashad Rizou? Kenneth Uriah, and then Sue Flint. Welcome.
President Sanchez, council members. My name is Assad Rizvi. I'm an Albuquerque local, born and raised, lived here my entire life. I'm also a recent graduate of the University of New Mexico, where I earned my civil engineering degree, and I'm here to talk in favor of TopGolf today. I'd like to be as bold as to speak on behalf of the millennials and up-and-coming young professionals in this city. While I have no intention of leaving Albuquerque anytime soon, many members of my cohort have expressed sentiments of discontent with what they perceive to be a lack of excitement and complacency in the city. And I think the city's support in bringing TopGolf to be the centerpiece of the new entertainment district in the area shows that Albuquerque is, in fact, capable of being on the leading edge, and I ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Keenan Uriah, followed by Sue Flint.
Hello, and thank you for hearing my opinion. I'm Keenan Uriah, I'm a fourth-generation New Mexican. I do commercial real estate, and I have had the pleasure of going to two TopGolf's, one in Las Vegas and one in Phoenix. I will say one thing, that the TopGolf, the workers there do seem very, very happy. I could compare it to something like a Deon's here, when you go into Deon's, there's young kids in there, they're working, and they're happy to go to work. I'd be more than happy to see another place like that in Albuquerque. I also do notice that a lot of people, I do commercial real estate, so a lot of people that I'm talking to over the phone, that I call across the country, do look at a lot of different variables. Seeing a place like TopGolf come to Albuquerque would, you know, put us in the running for states that are coming, that have been out of recession, and will help boost the economy and, you know, put us up there with places like Denver and Phoenix. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Flint, followed by Jason Vallancourt, followed by Katrina Flores, and she will be the last speaker. Welcome, Ms. Flint.
Good evening, Sue Flint. I'd first like to say that I could care less whether TopGolf comes or not. That doesn't matter to me at all. The fact is, is that I'm more interested in the players. And as we see here, we have the lawyer team that came in for you, Councilman President Sanchez, when you gave West Side Wall their money, as we knew it was for their infrastructure, for their streets. And then we get turned around, and we get a $40 million deficit. You raise the taxes, saying that we need it for our infrastructures, for our streets, yet they got money to build theirs free. Yay! So as far as TopGolf, you know, this isn't something that's going to save this city, it's going to create some minimum wage jobs, and what, you got those people that are making money there, are they going to support this TopGolf? I could care less. I don't know anybody that supports it, but, you know, that's not my point. You know, Dan Serrano, I believe, is the owner of this property, which was Water Park, and he was once deemed by the Appeal Court of New Mexico as one of the most corrupt men to do business with, and yet he sits on our EPC. You've got Ron Bohannon, you've got Jim Stroger, the Albuquerque Development Commissioner, saying this is great. He is an agent as well as Ron Bohannon for Wall. So I get lost in all of this appropriation and asking for money. If this is such a great company, why aren't they coming here and saying, "We believe in Albuquerque"? Well, the same reason Wall didn't say, "Hey, we believe in the West Side, we believe those people are going to buy all our houses." They came to you, and you gave them money. This is no different. You put people out of business for art, for the same people. Now you're saying TopGolf is the answer? It's not the answer. It's taking control, realizing what you did wrong. And what you did wrong was appropriate all this money that we went into a deficit for, so I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Vallancourt, followed by our last speaker, Katrina Flores.
Good evening. Thank you, President and council members. I, too, was here two months ago when y'all raised my taxes, and it's a little bit strange that we have money now for economic development. I love golf, I want TopGolf here, I want Big Shots here, I want as many of these facilities that think they can make it in Albuquerque to come as possible. I will tell you, this is the former general manager of Putt-Put Golfing Games, and the former general manager of Planet Fun, and operations manager for Hinkle Family Fund Center, that the cannibalization is real. The State Fair and the Balloon Fiesta themselves, you can close your businesses during those weeks for most of us, and I'm just giving you guys a hint on that one. It's crushing, there are only so many available dollars. Maybe if we had a more tax-friendly environment, we wouldn't have to bribe companies to come here. We have four public golf courses, they're already a burden on the taxpayer, and I am seriously trying to figure out why our city council thinks that this is how business is done, in Albuquerque or in the country that we live in. Competition is good, I'm all for it. I'm all for TopGolf coming here, they're backed by Callaway and several other billion-dollar organizations. I don't think they need my 2.6 million dollars' worth of taxes, so if you guys don't mind, go ahead and take it easy on us for once, and stick it to the man, and make them pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker will be Katrina Flores. Welcome.
Thank you, President and members of the council. My name is Katrina Flores, and as a member, as a former business owner myself, that was affected by a bigger corporate group or franchisee, I owned the first all-male hair salon here in New Mexico. I did sell it in 2009, because we had these, what was, I forget the name of them, of the all-male hair salons that they have now, they're all over the place, they're big in New York and stuff like that, but I was affected personally by them coming in. I catered to business professionals, and they started going to all these other hair salons, or barber shops that could afford to do more, have more than I did. And then I had to get a small business loan myself, I had to pay it back monthly, so why is this, our tax dollars going to go to a place that's coming from out of state? I'm a strong supporter of the local potential business of Big Shots. I just want to point out some comparisons of Big Shots versus TopGolf, and the local company, Big Shots, we are local, TopGolf is not. The technology is state-of-the-art, Doppler similar to what is used, trace the balls on TV for the Masters. TopGolf, 20-year-old old radio frequency ID, RFID technology. Big Shots, local contractors, yes, TopGolf, no requirement, and Big Shots, high wages, yes, and TopGolf, not based on current, TopGolf reported wages across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. That closes general public comment on this item. Let's go to Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. The first one is of The Economist. If I could ask you a couple of things? We discussed briefly some of the additional income coming to the city and the state because of TopGolf. Do you have a comparison of current property tax on the property and the estimated property tax when it is completed and operational?
President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, our estimate for property taxes upon completion is $136,000. Currently, we're estimating roughly about $12,000 against a value of about $1 million.
Thank you, sir. If I may?
Go ahead and proceed, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, and this one would be, thank you, for Ms. Nyer, the CAO. Did you do any research on Big Shots? A couple of questions about Big Shots. Did they ask, did they come to the city and request any assistance?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, I have not met with Big Shots, and as far as I know, they have not requested Lita assistance from the city at this time.
Okay. Did you do any research on them about their financing of some of the ownership properties?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, no.
Okay. It's just to clear the records, my understanding is that ownership has multiple IRBs from the county for their, not the ownership, the developer, including one in the city. So just, I mean, I'm not saying there's anything bad about that, what I'm trying to say is, this is a standard practice for large developments, so it's not like it's unusual that the city would help, it's not unusual that the county would help. This is the kind of things that we do to develop business and jobs in the city, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Nyer, I thought perhaps you'd... Ms. Nyer. I thought perhaps you looked into that.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Jones, no. We have not, I understand that the public and the Big Shots folks see these as related, but we have not treated these as related projects.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, we need to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of allowing this ordinance to be adopted the same evening it is substituted, because we are, because basically this is a floor substitute. Normally, we would have to basically defer this, but we have to substitute the rules to allow this to be voted on this evening. So at this time, I would like to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of allowing this ordinance to be adopted the same evening as it is substituted. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Davis. Any questions? See, none of those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes? Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill. Councilor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we certainly heard from a lot of people here, and I appreciate everybody for coming down to speak to this. At this point, I don't really think I can add anything more. I think a lot of people have put a lot of work into this, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful to Top Golf for hanging in there with us and getting this far. And as Councilor Jones mentioned, this is partnering with the private sector is a job that the city does. And, you know, it took me a while to really understand that fully. When I first came to council, I didn't, you know, I was, you know, pretty dead-set against subsidies of pretty much any kind of nature. And I have learned that there is a good reason for them many times. But I've also voted against some, some projects that due to, due to the type of funding, of public funding that they were seeking. And I will do that in the future as well. But here's the thing, with this particular project, $2.566 million is a lot of money. It's a lot of money to me. You know, it's a lot of money to probably everybody in this room. But it's a relatively small investment by the city for this, for a business coming in and/or expanding that's already here. It's a pretty small investment. The upside, of course, is the return on our investment. The tax dollars that it will bring in, not only grocery receipts tax, which we've talked with about, talked about quite a bit, but property taxes, which I was just told was, what was that, John, $1 million?
Madam President, Councilor Gibson, yeah, the breakout of the property tax between operating revenue and that revenue dedicated to debt service is about 78, if I'm remembering correctly, for operating and another 50 for debt service. That additional 50-some thousand dollars will generate additional capacity for our GO program of approximately $1 million.
$1 million annual?
$1 million over the course of the project.
Oh, over course of the, okay. Yeah, that makes more sense. Actually, $1 million annual would really be a sweet deal. So, so that's why I'm here, that's why I'm voting yes on this. You know, and going forward, I think that we've also got pretty good indication that this probably won't last a full, I mean, the increment part of it won't take 20 years for them to recoup and be made whole. It'll probably be closer to eight or 10 years. So I think we have a really solid project here, and I certainly urge everyone support.
We're not going to quite close yet. Councilor Gibson, let's go to the administration. Ms. Nyer?
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. Counselors, I won't talk too long because I feel like our public did a really great job of laying out the debate. And so I'll just summarize. You know, we still oppose this project. I think we, this is just one of those cases where we're going to respectfully and amicably disagree. But I want to be clear about what we disagree on and what we agree on, because we agree on a lot of things. We disagree that this is a good use of $2.6 million of taxpayer money in addition to the $1.7 that the county appears to be prepared to authorize. But we agree that Top Golf sounds super fun and cool. We agree that we need something in this location. And thanks to the work of the Development Commission and Mr. Zaman and Mr. Melendrez, as well as the applicants, we've been able to push for a lot of the protections that concerned us. So we were able to get the full-time jobs back. We were able to get a local best efforts sort of commitment. We were able to reduce the number of upfront dollars, and we were able to remove some of that override language in the ordinance that gave us a concern that we were basically setting aside Lita for this one project. But we have not gotten all the way to what we feel are complete protections for the taxpayer dollars. And specifically, the things we think are still lacking are the ability to clawback all of the money we're getting. We're only going to be able to clawback $400,000 of the $2.6 million as of this latest version of the PPA. And also, we also continue to agree with the Albuquerque Development Commission that the percentage of the increment is outsized compared to the amount of net new revenue. And I think the questions that Councilor Harris raised kind of spoke to the heart of that debate, that the applicants could still recover their $1.8 million. It would just take a little longer, and it would be a little less risk for the city. So, you know, that's where we are. And I have every feeling that this is going to pass, and that no matter what we do, it'll continue to pass. If that happens to be the case, we'll do everything we can to make this project successful, because that's our job. You know, once the legislature makes a policy decision, it's our job to faithfully execute that, our piece of it, and we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyer. Are there any other questions from this council? Councilor Davis?
Very briefly, Mr. President, thank you. Ms. Nyer, if you could just help us just a little bit, because we got started on this earlier. But I'm interested, because we have a new administration who has a new set of tools that they're using or looking, a new set of lenses that they're using to look at these projects with. And, you know, I want us to get back to the place where we're all working together again. I think this was a hard start for all of us to work on a project that we all inherited from applications from last year. But later on the agenda tonight, we have another economic development application the administration has put forward that proposes to use about the same amount of money, $630-some-odd thousand, to create 200 call center jobs at about $1,250 an hour. And compared at the $700,000 of city investment for the 130-some-odd $12-an-hour average jobs at Top Golf, I'm confused or trying to figure out how the administration justifies supporting one over the other, when, quite frankly, in public and in press releases, they've all said, "We're concerned that it's not high-quality, high-paying jobs," but choosing to support call center jobs and not these. Can you help me to see the administration's distinction between those?
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, yeah, I mean, part of it is the math, right? So this is a $2.6 million project, not a $700,000 project. So this pencils out to, I believe, upwards of $20,000 per job, as opposed to the other project that you'll be hearing about later tonight, hopefully after the dinner break, where we will be closer to the under $3,000 per job. So, yes, I think the audience actually did a great job of articulating why we need jobs at all different levels of skill base and why that first job is so meaningful to all of us and all that good stuff. So we would not say we never want to create minimum wage jobs, or we never want to create entry-level jobs. But it's that cost-per-job figure that gives us pause in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Nyer. I appreciate that. I still see it differently. I still see this as two different phases. I see the construction phase, where the city gets its cash back, and then the city shares in the success of the business in increment going forward. And we'll disagree on how we see that. And this is the city's first sort of trial run at this type of Lita opportunity that's been available now for the legislature. But I do want to ask and hopefully challenge, I agree with you, I think it passes. I don't know what the administration does. We may be back here in August, who knows. But I do want to challenge, and hope the administration will help us. And I know we have good economic development staff that we've worked a lot with. I'd love to work with the administration on the amendments we need to our Lita program to, as I started to say earlier, use these tools in a more progressive way, to guarantee that we have community workforce agreements that are for folks, if we're supporting construction, to guarantee that we're paying prevailing wage, and that those folks are having to do that with our public dollars, to include not just some guarantee of jobs, but living wage, which is about $15 an hour in Albuquerque. And if they can't do that, to justify that, so we can have a conversation about whether those are the right sort of entry-level jobs that get us to that place. Not every company's entitled to public dollars. But those that come and ask us for it have an obligation to show us that they're a good partner with the city and our values. And I think we're doing that. I appreciate very much that, as a new administration, this administration worked with, particularly with me and others, to work on the CSI Lita application just a few months ago. We had no problem in turning over several hundred thousand dollars to a company who didn't give us very firm job numbers, but clearly had a record in our community of giving back and creating high-dollar jobs. And so I think we can find ways to use these tools in a better way. And I'd love to work with the administration on the amendments that ADC and others think we need in future projects, but lacking those now, I think we have an obligation to continue to invest in companies that show that they're willing to step up and commit. And so I'll be voting to approve. And thank you.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, to respond to your request, yes, well, to clear up things, CSI is a pass-through of state dollars, so it's a little different. But also, yes, we would love to work to strengthen Lita, but we would also like to see the process proceed in a way that we can enforce the current protections that the Lita ordinance and statute already provide. And I think, you know, we got close here, but not all the way. And I think we can continue to work on that on a process level as well.
Councilwoman Eagle?
I was just going to mention, you know, the issue regarding public-private partnerships, which are very important in terms of bringing economic development to the city. And I point to you projects that we worked on in the past, Albuquerque High, where we had three developers involved, Beta West, which is just across the street, where the city participated. And we had some federal money. And there were some, you know, I mean, throughout the city, you look at all of these different types of projects. The International Market was a public-private partnership where the city and the developer participated in. And they've been in areas that were sort of going, you know, had issues or were redevelopment areas. And, you know, you look around the city and you start thinking, you know, there's not a lot of areas that aren't redevelopment areas anymore. I mean, the railroad is another example that we haven't been able to move forward. But, you know, in areas where we have participated and we have worked with developers in good faith, we've ended up with projects that were very successful. And I think that, you know, we really have to start looking at a lot of our city as redevelopment areas. There's very few, except for some maybe on the West Side, where you have a lot of vacant land that's not redevelopment. But, you know, you start thinking to yourself, I mean, it's important that we work together in good faith, and that we create the safeguards. I think the safeguards are important. And we did start at a different place with the administration. I think that the developer has worked hard to try to meet a lot of the criteria that was put forth to them. And as I mentioned earlier, it's been kind of a short period. But, you know, if you think about what I mentioned earlier about destination, you know, we're losing a lot of revenue in the city of Albuquerque because people are not staying here. And we need to start thinking more in terms of how we really, as a city, create destination points. So I definitely want to support this project.
Thank you. Councilor Penya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions, probably for Mr. Zaman or Mr. Melendrez. So on the agreement, paragraph B, it talks about wages and benefits, and it goes on to say, "The company anticipates that jobs shall fall within the wages ranges." And so we're looking at 132 jobs. But then it goes on to say, "Failure to meet such wage and benefit projections shall not constitute an event of default, as defined before, or form a basis for any clawback payment." Can you help me to understand that? Because it's, the way I interpret it, it's kind of scary, because it's saying that, you know, they will, you know, create these 132 jobs. But then if they don't, is that what it's saying or not? So if you could help me with that.
Is that on?
Mr. President, Councilor Penya, if I may, I'll start out, and then I'll turn it over to Chris for just a moment. To your, to your first comment about the jobs, the 132 jobs, I've taken the liberty of doing an average, a weighted average hourly wage for the 132 positions. Actually, this is taken for the application, from the application, so it's 123 positions. But the weighted average in terms of an hourly wage is $16.56 an hour. They're projecting to hire 24 bay hosts at $16.35 an hour, and a number of leadership positions, 25, I believe, that are in the $58,000-plus range. So those are the types of employees that we're looking at, is looking at. As far as, as far as the event of default and not meeting those provisions, I'll just turn that over to Mr. Melendrez.
Thanks, Sean. Mr. President, Councilor Penya, so the way that that plays out is that, you know, a default is essentially a violation of the agreement. And so the way that the agreement is structured, it builds in this potential for a not meeting of the jobs requirements. And that's dealt with in the form of the clawback. So a default would essentially be that the agreement isn't being followed. It would be set aside. Perhaps other consequences would flow from that. However, with respect to the jobs requirements that is dealt with specifically within the agreement, it's anticipated, and there's a consequence built in to the company not meeting those jobs requirements. Essentially, that consequence is that they have to turn back over some of the funding that the city granted them. And so it wouldn't constitute a default. I think that's a correct statement. It wouldn't constitute a violation of the agreement. It would only trigger the clawback provision, which is the security for the city relative to its contribution of the Lita money.
Mr. President, Mr. Melendrez, so it says then, under events of default and remedies, under item B, it says notice of event of default. So is this what they're referencing? That's on page nine.
Sorry, Mr. President. Councilor Penya, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the exact same language that you're looking at.
Counselor, are you looking at the red line or the thin version?
I'm looking at the last version you gave us.
Does it have interlineations?
It does. It has red lines.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's on page nine. I just want to ensure that if we're saying that they're going to create 132 jobs, it's going to be an average of 16-plus dollars an hour, that if they don't maintain the level of 132, that there is some kind of remedy for the city of Albuquerque.
Mr. President, Councilor Penya, stated that way, that is absolutely correct. Maybe a way to think about it would be that if they sort of default on the employment promise, that triggers the clawback up to complete repayment back of what the city has contributed.
Okay. So it still leaves me with concern that failure, however, failure to meet such wage and benefit projections shall not constitute an event of default, defined below, or form the basis for any clawback payment. That's on page seven, under wages and benefits.
Ms. Nyer?
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. Councilor Penya, I think I might understand your question here, because it was one of the reasons that we wanted to use our form of agreement. What this says is that, everything that Mr. Melendrez said is absolutely correct. But what this- said is absolutely correct. But what this particular paragraph says is that if they create 132 jobs that pay $8 an hour, that still counts as 132 jobs and it does not form the basis of a clawback payment. If they create 132 jobs with no benefits, um, then that still counts and there's no clawback. So that's what this particular paragraph does. Now, I, I'm sure there's no intent to do that, but that's the purpose of this paragraph.
Ms. Nyer, for the record, the minimum wage here in Albuquerque is not $8 an hour?
Council President Sanchez, that's correct. I, I just threw a number out there. It's whatever, whatever dollar they, uh, provide. If it's less than what they represented in the application, then that doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Mister President, Counselor Penya, I've had a chance to review that. Um, now I'll kind of refresh my, my recollection of that section and, and I concur with the CAO's read of that.
So it kind of does leave us with a little bit of a vulnerability there.
Uh, Mister President, Counselor Penya, um, to the extent that, that the vulnerability is not meeting the, uh, the, the projected wages as proposed within the application, um, the claw, it, it's correct to say that the, the, there would not be a triggering event for the clawback.
So what would we have to do to ensure that, that they do meet what was anticipated in the agreement?
Mister President, Counselor Penya, um, the way it's drafted now, um, the agreement, you know, as we've been discussing, deals exclusively with full-time job numbers. And so, um, as part of the application that was submitted, uh, to the city, they described all of their job numbers as was, uh, analyzed and described by, by Mr. Zaman. Um, the clawback provisions don't currently have, uh, a provision relative to, you have to have a certain number of jobs and this is what they have to be paid. Um, the, the, the project proponents have proposed, uh, pay rates and a schedule that I think the city would anticipate they would, uh, hold up. Um, to the extent that, that that was something that wanted to be added to the agreement, um, that is another section or provision that would have to be added, agreed to by the applicant, negotiated by the city.
So Mister President, it looks like Mr. Buckles and some of the staff from Topgolf are having a conversation back there. How do we ensure that, you know, I know you can't come up with, you know, you're going to have 132 jobs and you're going to have these specific jobs that pay a certain, a certain amount. But how do we ensure that not all 132 jobs are $8 an hour?
Counsel President Sanchez, uh, Counselor Penya, can you restate the question for me? I apologize. My name is Josh.
How through, yes. Mister President, um, so how do we ensure that these 132 jobs, um, are not all $8 an hour jobs? Because this agreement kind of leaves that open.
So, so two comments, uh, Counsel President and, uh, Counselor Penya. One, I'd point out to the council that the language that we're looking at is, um, language that I think that this council, this body's passed on previously and included in sort of the standard boilerplate form of project participation agreement, um, sort of not created uniquely for this deal. Uh, s- secondly, I, I guess what we'd say is we'd look at the average, um, number that, um, that's been presented in the application, uh, try to come to a weighted average and try to get comfort with that number. I point that the full-time jobs, uh, in addition, have, uh, benefits, as we've talked about, uh, full-time benefits, uh, including health insurance, dental, 401K, uh, et cetera, as laid out in the application. See, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah. I, I just wanted to make a quick note, uh, as it relates to that question. Yeah, that was one of the items that we talked extensively about, um, as we were drafting this PPA. Um, this prototype, this will be, Albuquerque will be the third smallest market that Topgolf has operated in. Um, and they are stating to their best efforts what they believe this market will, um, uh, what the performance of this facility will be and what those wages will be in the application. Um, at this time, they are comfortable stating, "These are the positions that we can guarantee the city." Um, and it is company policy that any employee that works over 30 hours a week receives full company benefits, which is substantial. And I think the application actually says, or, excuse me, the PPA actually says 32 hours. Um, so in, in working with council services, um, that was what Topgolf was comfortable with in the project participation agreement.
Mister President, um, Mr. Zaman, so is there still a way in, in terms of just tweaking the language a little bit to be more consistent? I mean, I don't, I know that we don't have to, um, there's, there should be some flexibility. But I think that, um, for my comfort level, I think it's important to ensure that, um, you know, these, the jobs created are, are based on what we're approving today in essence.
Could, could I interject one more ti- I, I apologize. I, this is a comment I should have brought up earlier. One of the key things I believe in the application, uh, that was missing is a lot of these jobs will be tipped positions. And so the tipped portion of those positions is not stated in the application, um, which will obviously boost the, um, bu- boost the, uh, amount of compensation for that particular employee. So I want to make sure, uh, I mention that.
And if I could just make David Buckholz again, one point clear. But if I'm wrong, people should tell me that I'm wrong. I am advised that the particular issue that's raised by Counselor Penya is one that exists in all existing LITA transactions now. And that this, if you will, theoretical risk is one that, um, is regularly presented. Um, I think there are other, uh, significant protections within the deal, as, as Drew just, um, explained, that, um, should come into play to cause this not, cause there not to be an issue here. But as I've been advised, um, this particular item is consistent with how other LITA transactions are done. And if I'm wrong, I stand corrected, but people should say.
Mr. Zaman?
Uh, Mister President, Counselor Penya, um, we, we didn't look at this because this is, um, to a certain extent, boilerplate language. But I would imagine, um, that, that we could treat this on a, on a clawback basis, um, based on a certain percentage of weighted average, uh, hourly wage. Um, we would, we would have to work with, uh, the applicants who would then have to, to report back to, to Topgolf. So it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a quick process. But, uh, just off the top, that's the, uh, the only way I can think about doing that, which would be, say, you have said in your application, you're going to hire this many positions at this, at this hourly rate. That leaves us a weighted average of X. If you don't give us a weighted average of X minus Y, uh, we'll begin to clawback some of the incentive.
Uh, Mister President, so th- then my last question is, is this pretty much boilerplate? What we, what we've used, um, historically? I mean, is this any different?
Mister President, Counselor Penya, this lang- the current language that's in the, uh, in the PPA is standard language.
Well, then, with that said, Mister President, I think what we need to do is kind of, um, specific to what, um, Counselor Davis mentioned is that I think we really need to look at our, our, how we do our LITA funding and ensure that we have, um, full protections in place for, for the city of Albuquerque at moving forward. So, thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I would like to move, perhaps, that we table this until after lunch and, but with a qualifying question to staff. Is it possible that, uh, you could come up with something over, over our dinner break? Or is...
Um, Mister President, Ca- I'm sorry, Counselor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mister President, Counselor Gibson, I, I think it, it would be fairly straightforward to come up with the language itself and, and maybe even the appropriate number. However, um, it, it's, it's not as simple as the folks in the room making that decision. That has to go all the way up through, uh, to the folks at Topgolf. And, and that, um, has proved to be, um, a fairly time-consuming process.
So Mister President, if I may, I, we do have somebody from Topgolf here, though.
Um, Mister, Mister President, Counselor Gibson, I, I do, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure she would be in a position to make that call.
Okay.
Although I, I would defer to the applicants for that answer.
All right.
This, um, Counsel President, Counselor Gibson, this wage provision is a provision that we talked extensively with council services about. Um, we, we, if you remember Sanjay Aurora, uh, who was with Topgolf, his wife's having a baby today. Otherwise, he would be here with us. Um, we spent an extensive amount of time on this. Um, Topgolf was willing to commit to a job number and they were not comfortable with a wage, uh, number. And, um, they did tell us that their corporate policy was that anybody in a full-time position does receive full company benefits. Um, so I, I just want this council to be aware, this issue was raised. This issue was brought all the way up to the top at Topgolf. Um, the direction that we got was, we will commit to a job number, um, but not a wage number.
Counselor Gibson?
Uh, I'm going to move to table this until after dinner break.
We have a motion, any second to table this item, till right after the dinner break. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed? That carries on a seven-to-two vote. Uh, we will return after the dinner break and continue with deliberations on Topgolf.